Alright, I want to call to order a, uh, called order a regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Could ask everybody to please settle down for a minute and quiet down. Alright, thank you. And a call to order, a regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Fellas, do you have roll call?
Chairperson Bob McCool.
Uh, here.
Vice Chairperson Lisa Ritchie. Commissioner Stiles Harden here, David Harper.
Yeah.
Jerry Malia.
Here.
Dan Miller. Jason Reese. Anthony Stewart.
Here.
Steve Whitty.
Here.
Planner Stephen Williams.
Here.
Attorney Dan Harvey.
Here.
Thank you. Um, let's see, so time for a public comment on some consent agenda or non-agenda items. That would be anything related to that's not related to the agenda item tonight on, um, Remington Homes. Anybody have anything they want to speak to? Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Gray and I'm homeowner and also on the Coal Creek Crossing Board. And I just want to read you guys a letter from our board. Dear Chairman McCool and members of the Town Superior Planning Commission, we would like to share our concerns as a community over Remington's inability to complete after almost two years since our last home was completed, the common areas, site drainage, and landscaping of Coal Creek Crossing to the specification in our approved final development plan. Our hope is by sharing these yet to be resolved experiences with this builder specifically, no other development with Remington will face the same daunting challenge as we do. Native grasses were neither installed correctly or in some cases watered to establish property from the time Remington exited the HOA. Some areas still do not have temporary water installed, even though this was specified on our final development plan. The only maintenance possible in those areas was to, uh, in order to keep the noxious weed populations under control was mowing. Our largest common area was seeded with native seed three times and temporary water was added last year. However, the town has indicated they believe Remington is, was and is still underwatering this area. As a community, we have heard a lot of native grass takes time to grow, but we are truly skeptical that without proper planting, water, and care mainly weeds will grow. The plan submitted by Remington's landscaper in September was supposed to help ensure successful germination and establishment of these natural areas, but it was not followed by Remington. This plan was formulated after the community and Remington met with a representative from the Boulder County CSU Extension Office. We are also doubtful that the trees and the landscaping were planted in accordance with specifications. Many of since have since died. We have heard homeowners say they are more than happy with the home that they have purchased from Remington, but are beyond frustrated with the lack of completion of our outstanding issues. The Town of Superior has been and will continue to be instrumental in bringing these matters to Remington and assisting with what we as a community hope will be completion to the specification matching our final development plan. It would be remiss to not express our frustration and true dissatisfaction with what is perceived as Remington's lack of commitment to project completion for Coal Creek Crossing. We are raising our issues so that the town can take measures to avoid the situation in future developments. No builder should be able to depart a community without delivering what they have signed on for and promised to the community. Thank you in advance. Coal Creek Crossing Board.
Thank you. Are there any other non-agenda items? That was comment on the upcoming hearing, um, but is it related to the, the public hearing or? If you could hold it for the public hearing, then we can bring it into the public hearing record. That would be better. Okay. And, and I apologize, you need to sit through a little bit, but, um, that would be good if we could wait till then. Is there any other non-agenda, non-related items that, that aren't on our, on our agenda tonight? Alright, so that way we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have minutes from the November 20th meeting. Anybody have any comments, changes? For those, can I entertain a motion to approve those minutes? Okay, we have a. Motion by, yep.
Second.
And, yep, and all in favor? And one abstention.
I abstain.
And two abstentions. Alright. Okay, so we're going to move on to our public hearing. Uh, give me just a minute. Alright, so we have a public hearing and adoption of a resolution recommending approval of a final development plan for Block 25, Superlot A and Outlet G and associated subdivision plat for Blocks 25. Fellas, do we have proof of publication? Okay. And let's see, do you have a presentation, Steven?
I do.
Okay, cool. Is there a 3D presentation tonight too or?
There is.
Excellent.
Fellas, can you turn the lights off when you get a chance? Uh, good evening, Stephen Williams Town Staff. Tonight's development application involves a final plat as well as a final development plan for Block 25 of Downtown Superior. Representatives from Remington Homes and RC Superior are both here tonight and have a presentation of their own. The town has also coordinated to have this proposal added to the 3D model for downtown. So Chase Mullen from MIG is on hand to fly us through that model as well. The subject property is located in Planning Area 3 of Downtown Superior, immediately south of Old Railway uh, and west of Prominent Drive. Block 13, which is currently developed in downtown, and reference in, in staff's memo lies northeast of Block 25 on the opposite side of Prominent Drive. Uh, Block 13 was first, the first residential development block to be constructed within Downtown Superior. The northeast edge of Block 25 was approved for 25, uh, townhome units. This was also approved, approved for 25 townhome units. This proposal seeks to develop the remaining portion of Block 25. Uh, the Wonderland Townhome units within Block 13 are located on the eastern edge as well as the southern, or excuse me, the western edge, the northern edge, as well as the eastern edge of Block 25 as illustrated in yellow. Remington has developed a remainder of Block 13 with a mix of townhomes and single-family units. The detached single-family homes are located on Superior Drive and on Village Green Way, illustrated here in blue, and their townhomes are cited internally within Block 13, illustrated here in red. Remington's proposal for Block 25 is to largely continue this development pattern by locating additional single-family homes on Village Green Way and Discovery Parkway, um, and citing most of their townhome product within Block 25. Blocks 13 and 25 will differ on the northern edges, uh, as Wonderland develop along Old Railway within Block 13, and Remington is proposing to develop here within Block 25. In addition to consistency in the development pattern and the products offered, the alignment of the internal lanes, uh, as well as the pedestrian pathways have been coordinated, uh, within each of these blocks. Here are some photographs of the products that are currently built within Block 13 with the Remington Townhome units illustrated on the upper left and the Wonderland Townhome units on the bottom right. Uh, renderings of Remington's three and four-story single-family home options are on the top, uh, right and lower left, uh, here as well. In addition to coordinating, uh, with the existing development within Downtown Superior, Block 25 has also been coordinated with the Discovery Residential Duplex Development that was approved earlier this year. These two subdivisions will both utilize Canary Lane, uh, which has been plotted to parallel the alignment of Discovery Parkway. Uh, as you may recall, the pedestrian path through Discovery Office Park Development to Downtown Superior was previously required by that PD, uh, and the DOP, the Discovery Office Park FDP, approval shifted this connection, uh, east into Block 25. As illustrated here, uh, maybe they're not coming up, but there, uh, there's three connections that are actually proposed, um, within Block 25 now. One between the two developments and then two further to the south, one here, uh, and one, uh, here. So there's three internal connections, uh, within Block 25 that get you to, um, the Downtown Superior core. And here are a couple of, uh, colored renderings from the Discovery Office Park FDP for context about what was approved there. The one on the south is the units that'll front, uh, Canary Lane. Um, and it's a two-story product from this southern elevation and it steps down the hill and becomes a three-story product, uh, when you're looking, um, from the north. Uh, the maximum height for those units is 32 feet. The current plat application is required to create the 75 new residential lots proposed in addition to the seven proposed outlots. Block 25 has been separated into four plat sheets and organized, uh, north to south as indicated here by the sheet, the sheet layout index. The scale of these partial plans helps to convey the dimensions and the details and outlots required of the easements. We're not going to get through each of those tonight, uh, but we can if you have any questions on it. In total, 5.39 acres is included with this application with 2.2 acres dedicated to the residential lots, uh, an additional 1.3, 3 acres dedicated to the private lanes within Outlet G and 1.78 acres allocated to the additional, uh, outlots proposed, most of which includes irrigated green space. The development portion of this application is detailed in the applicant's 55-page FDP, FDP proposal. I will also not be covering each of those plan sheets, um, here tonight. Instead, I'll highlight the key components and clarify the applicant's exception requests. The cover sheet here includes the required information, including the signature blocks as well as, uh, important development tables related to setbacks, building heights, and parking. The setbacks for the townhomes are generally proposed at zero feet from all sides with two-foot side setbacks shown, uh, for the end units. The single-family homes are shown to have zero-foot setbacks from the front and rear property lines and three-foot side yards on this table. Uh, this table however needs to be updated to reflect the PD requirement of a two-foot front setback, uh, which Remington has shown elsewhere in their application. Uh, just a technical correction to get this table, uh, updated. Building heights for townhomes would range from 39 feet to 44 feet, while heights for the single-family detached homes would between, would be between 39 feet and 50 feet, depending upon whether a three-story or four-story home is built. Block 25 is afforded a 55-foot maximum height allowance and the established PD setbacks for Downtown Superior, um, only relate to, uh, the parcels that are adjacent to the street, which we'll show here in a second. Um, this table also conveys that two garage parking spaces are provided for each of the 75 residents along with 10 parking spaces and both of these, um, parking allowances exceed the requirements of the, of the PD. So the PD for Downtown Superior, um, require, established the required setbacks and building heights for Block 25, the two setbacks, uh, requirements are shown here on the left. Um, the north edge of Block 25 is impacted by a zero to 15-foot setback requirement and the single-family homes along the southern border and the eastern border of, um, along Village, or along Discovery Parkway, excuse me, require a two-foot to eight-foot, uh, setback from the property line. And then again, uh, this just shows the 55-foot height allowance for Block 25 and it also conveys in gray where, where else within Planning Area 3 a 55-foot height allowance is allowed. The area shaded in yellow clarifies the 32-foot height requirement for Planning Area 3. The applicant's contact site plan is reflected here. It illustrates some of the connectivity and design coordination that has previously been discussed. In addition to demonstrating how proposed lanes will tie into surrounding streets, it also illustrates where pedestrian and ADA paths have been afforded and where accessible dwelling units will be located within Block 25. Similar to the Block 13 concept, the lots with, within Block 25 that are immediately adjacent to surrounding streets will be cited to face those streets while the interior units will be oriented to face Block 25's internal courtyard. This will allow both exterior and interior units to share the proposed alleyways. This design does not meet a strict interpretation of Section 8, 3C of the Design Guidelines, which stipulates that building fronts and main entries shall orient to the, to streets. As outlined in staff's memo, PC is requesting, or staff is requesting Planning Commission to provide direction on this request through tonight's public meeting. This application, uh, includes all the required, um, overall site plans and partial site plans for things like landscaping, uh, site planning, uh, utility design, uh, and drainage. Uh, the overall site plan, the overall site plan is illustrated here and over all the overall sheets are consistently followed by four partial plans, plan sheets that illustrate the details of each specific proposal. The overall plans like this one should clarify how designs work comprehensively for the entire block. Uh, the plan sheet also clarifies where these two in yellow, uh, section views have been drawn, which are shown on Plan, Plan Sheet 19, which we'll discuss here in a minute. Staff requested that these section views be included with the FDP to help illustrate the changes in grade that occur within Block 25 and the impact that topography will have on the proposed building heights. Plan Sheet 23, kind of jumping ahead, uh, has been included with this FDP to clarify what units are proposed where as well as to help illustrate the minimum setbacks proposed. Remington is proposing, uh, zero-foot front, rear, and side setback minimums for all of their townhomes and zero-foot rear setbacks for their single-family lots, uh, which these single-family lots will be afforded three-foot side setbacks and two-foot front setbacks. As illustrated, the typical setback plans, plot plans, uh, for each plan, plan type primarily, uh, are generally drawn from primary walls, um, and they're actually afforded more, uh, more distance than the zero-foot setback suggests. The zero-foot setback is required to allow for overhangs, eaves, um, and other projections. Where overhangs are shown to encroach into utility easements and easement agreement will be required and staff has required that this agreement be drafted and recorded, uh, along with the FDP for this, this proposal. So that's a condition of this approval. Uh, Remington has included, uh, both black and white, uh, elevation plans within their FDP submittal and as well as a color, uh, version, uh, as an attached exhibit. The elevation proposal for their 101, 102, and 103, uh, plans is illustrated here. The map on the left illustrates where these units, uh, will be located, um, within Block 25. I struggled with this today. I had this all highlighted and for whatever reason, every time I highlighted it, the background dropped out. So I'm just going to have to go, go through and go through each one and tell you where they are. But the 102, uh, 101, 102, and 103 units are, are located on the, uh, northern part of the site, all located here and then on the southern part of the site. So they're, they're shown here as well. So mix, so looking back to the actual elevations, a mix of stone and lap siding is proposed with stone largely covering the walls of the first floor elevations and defining the porch columns that extend to the second stories. Horizontal lap siding is incorporated between the columns at the ground levels, uh, and the primary facade finish for the upper second and, second and third story walls. Two different types of stone are proposed to differentiate interior units from exterior units on the ground level. Uh, these elevations also illustrate, uh, that covered front porches have been incorporated into design, into the design with second, uh, level decks above. Remington's 104 plan is illustrated here. This model is designed for the south side of Meridian Lane. It's shown, uh, in this location here. And will be built into the topography of the block. Although similar colors and materials are proposed for this building type, Plan 104 differs from Plans 101 through 103 in the location of where stone is proposed relative to the horizontal lap siding. Plan 104 utilizes stoned on end columns and on the facades, uh, between the porch elements to separate the units from one another. Um, Plan 104 also incorporates one, one stone variation versus two. Uh, these units are only located on the upper half of Block 25 where slopes, where slopes are steeper and elevation plans for these units clarify that the townhomes have been designed to work with existing contours. So you're going to see a two-story perspective from the front of these units and then when you see the, the building rears where you enter from the garages, it'll appear as three stories and this side elevation kind of helps clarify how, uh, these units, um, step down the hill. So building heights from the front will appear at 32 and a half feet while heights from the rear, rear elevations are closer to 44, uh, feet tall. Remington's 105 plan, uh, is proposed along the north edge of Canary Lane. These four units and then these additional, uh, seven units to the south, uh, will be the 105 plan. Here, front building elevations are reflected as three stories in height and rear elevations are shown as two stories, uh, with building fronts varying between 43 and 44 feet and the rear elevations closer to, uh, 30 feet in height. The architecture for Plan 105 is comparable to the designs for 101 through 103, uh, with two types of stone proposed on columns that surround front porches and second-level balconies. Lap siding, however, not stone, is proposed as a primary finish, uh, within both and outside within, uh, the, the columns and also outside of the columns. And then a staccato board is also incorporated on the upper levels of both the front and rear elevations to offer another building material and color finish. So that's the, the front elevation of that unit at the three stories, which you'll see from inside the courtyard and then along, uh, Canary Lane, you'll see a two-story product, uh, as you enter in on this side of the garage and there'll be a level, a living level below the garage level as you go down, down the hill. Um, the building elevations for Remington's detached single-family vias are organized differently from the townhome models and on these slides, this map dropped out entirely. So, uh, I'll just tell you now that the single-family homes again are on the, uh, southwest side of Canary Lane along Discovery Parkway and then the other ones are along Village Green, uh, way here on the south part of the site. Um, so all of these lots, uh, can accommodate any of the 800 series product that Remington is proposing that are all plotted at minimum, uh, dimensions of 40, uh, by 45 feet. Um, and for each of Remington's, uh, via plans, two elevation options are proposed, both an A and a B. Um, each plan sheet therefore illustrates the side rear and front elevations of, of both, uh, both options. Additionally, each via plan includes an option for a fourth level. So Remington's FDP sheets, uh, there's, there's two for, there's two for each essentially, um, clarifying how they would look as both a three-story and four-story product. The architectural elevation variation between A and B occur in the roof form, the location of the stone and window placement. Uh, and then for this option here, uh, Plan 801, you don't see the front door on the front facade. Uh, it's a side entry door. Um, the large, um, both of these units are, are defined by, uh, large, uh, stone columns accentuating, uh, kind of a two-tiered balcony design and that's consistent through each of these models. Uh, the fourth story adds a, a, a third balcony at the top level. And then moving on, kind of clarifying the differences between these. This is a, uh, Plan 801, which we just discussed. 802 essentially, um, flips the design and puts a, a narrower balcony element on the right side and, and orients the garage door in the center. And then, uh, Plan 803, it's again a wider balcony component here, uh, with a door underneath, uh, the second level balcony. Uh, Remington's, uh, building lot plan sheet also includes two data tables and several notes. The two tables are reflected here. In addition to relating building heights and setbacks, these tables clarify that mostly three-bedroom units are proposed. Remington's proposal includes, uh, two, uh, Plan 101 units, which will only offer two bedrooms and those units are located, uh, kind of here in the northwest corner of the site. The table also captures the second to Remington's primary exception requests. The plan, uh, square footage allowance, uh, for Remington's single-family homes reflects 2,480 square feet to 2,560 square feet proposed for their three-story options. The via topology, uh, typology, um, design guideline and PD standard, uh, is limited to 1,500 to 2,400 square foot range for this product. So any of their proposals, uh, any of their single-family proposals require an exception. Um, but this exception, uh, becomes greater when the fourth floor option, uh, is added on. So that's what this table is here to reflect. The fourth floor option essentially adds an additional 500 square feet, um, to each of their, their plan models. As the floor area limitations impact the overall building massing, staff also included information regarding how the heights of each, of each of Remington's single-family options, uh, change when the fourth floors are added. So that additional height for the 801 unit is about eight feet. It's a little taller than that for the 803 unit and it's actually less, um, closer to six feet, uh, for the 803 unit. As mentioned earlier, the topography of Block 25 will also have an impact on building heights, both in relation to other buildings and on the pedestrian perspectives of these heights within the development. Staff requested those section views that I mentioned earlier be included with this proposal to clarify, uh, these changes in topography. So those section views are highlighted again in yellow here and then that sheet, uh, the section view, um, is included here, um, for reference. And that is Sheet, Sheet 19 of the FDP plan set. As illustrated, the final elevation grade on Block or on Lot, uh, 45 is proposed at 55, uh, 46 while the final grade of Lot 76, uh, downhill is 55 15, a difference of 31 feet. This section also clarifies how building heights will relate to one another, uh, as well as building separation. So Section A on top reflects a roughly 48-foot tall, single-family home on Lot 45, which would be sighted across Canary Lane from one of Remington's townhomes, which is, uh, proposed at 39 feet tall. When variations in grade are accounted for, the four-story via home reflected on, uh, Lot 45 would stand roughly 15 feet taller than the three-story townhome product, uh, across Canary Lane. Similarly, the townhome product on Lot 47, which measures 39 feet, would be roughly 23-foot, 23 feet taller than the 35-foot townhome proposed on Lot 76, which is across, uh, Outlet L, uh, when the elevation changes are considered. Section B, uh, below reflects a less extreme height variation that occurs further south as the lot or the Block 25 kind of tapers off, uh, grade-wise with the overall height difference between the via home on Lot 36 and the townhome shown on Lot 57, illustrated as roughly eight feet of difference and the difference between the two townhomes proposed across from one another within, uh, Outlet L as closer to 12 feet in, in, in height difference. Staff wishes to remind Planning Commission that the height allowances within Downtown Superior also change, as we showed earlier, uh, south of Village Green Way and southwest of Discovery Parkway where a 32-foot height allowance, uh, is requested or is required. Remington's request to exceed the floor area height allowance, or the floor area allowance, excuse me, within their VA units uh, constitutes the other, uh, exception request that staff seeking direction from Planning Commission tonight. So we're transitioning kind of back to the site design now to go over a few remaining items and then I'll turn it over to either Chase or the applicant. Uh, Plan Sheet 4, illustrated here, provides a closer look at what is proposed for the northern segment of Block 25. At this scale, building clusters and relationships, uh, as well as building footprints relative to property lines are more clear. Uh, as illustrated, Plan, as, and as I mentioned, Plan 102, townhomes are proposed along Old Railway. Uh, four in one building and five in another. These units are separated by Outlet J, uh, centrally sighted, um, along Old Railway. Uh, this will also provide access from Old Railway directly into the central, uh, portion of Outlet L. This plan sheet also clarifies that three guest parking spaces are proposed, uh, east of Lot 84 here uh, and then it also clarifies where snow storage is proposed. Uh, the drainage sheets included with this proposal reflect the slopes that exist within Block 25 uh, and, and help clarify the need for the retaining walls and the stairs that are shown internal, uh, to the site. This partial plan sheet also conveys the individual lot details, including the location of porches, front doors, driveways, uh, and the town, townhome type proposed for each lot. The 102 townhomes are proposed along Old Railway and a mix of 101 and 103 plans are on the south side of Buttercup Lane. Along Meridian Lane is a mix of the 103 and 104 units, uh, illustrated here. All the units within Block, within Block 25, internal to it, will be oriented to face, uh, Outlet, uh, L to the, to the south and, and west, excuse me. Plan Sheet 5 reflects, uh, the central portion of Block 25, moving clockwise from the north. Remington Homes is proposing two additional townhomes, uh, along, uh, the north, kind of east side of, northeast side of the site and then, uh, seven additional townhomes, right, excuse me, nine additional townhomes on the south side of the site. And then across the street on Canary Lane is the, the single-family homes or the northern portion of the single-family homes as proposed along Discovery Parkway. As detailed in staff's memo as well as the applicant's narrative, the townhome floor plans are largely driven by topography with the 104 unit, uh, designed to be built into the hill and the 105 unit designed to step down the hillside. hill and the 105 unit designed to step down the hillside. The model homes for 101 through 103 are designed for the more level sites. And then you can kind of see some of the staircases that are proposed here and the access that is, is a little bit constrained on the site. So there is access to this unit, but you don't get from this unit down to this unit without going further down the hill and kind of going around the site. And staff worked closely with the applicant on this design in order to kind of eliminate the height of the retaining walls interior to Block 25. They're roughly four feet in height, whereas the first version, I think of the application that we saw was closer to seven feet in height. So this allows for separation between the retaining walls, allows for additional landscaping on each side of the retaining wall, but it does come with some less connectivity. So there's not some immediately adjacent connections that you might expect, but that connectivity still does exist, it's just a little more circuitous. The fourth plan sheet captured here reflects seventh, excuse me, I'm off the sheet. Plan Sheet 5 reflected here reflects the, I'm still off the sheet. Alright, I'm, I'm on. Partial Plan Sheet 3 reflected here reflects the majority of the southern section of Block 25. In general, the layout of this plan sheet is consistent with what we just described above, except in this location, you're going to have the same units facing each other across the way. These are the 103 townhomes. There is a little bit of change in elevation, but it does taper off at the southern section. And you also have a wider area of courtyard between the two with no need for the retaining The other thing that's captured on this plan sheet are the six additional guest parking spaces that are located along the north side of Marigold Lane. And then finally, this bottom portion of the application includes the single-family homes that are proposed along Discovery or Village Green Way, excuse me. And there's an outlot here that connects this area to the internal portion of Block 25 as well. And then finally, Remington's overall landscape plan is illustrated here. The design has been influenced by the topography of Block 25. Staff has worked with the applicant to minimize the heights of the retaining walls, as I mentioned, and ensure that adequate landscaping is afforded and that the, the design actually incorporates some, some gathering spaces. So there's some sodded areas primarily within the external outlots and then located here at this, at this corner within Outlot L. Staffs also worked with them to include some additional green spaces and flatter areas that are usable further south on the site. And we've also ensured that all installed landscape spaces will be irrigated. So staff is recommending approval for both applications. Aspects of this proposal outlined here, and then seeking input from Planning Commission on the requested exceptions that I noted tonight. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. And then also provide direction on whether or not you want to hear the applicant's presentation or you want to see the 3D model first.
Yeah. We have any questions for, for staff? Not so much commenting on your.
Sorry, my mic. Are there any questions for, for staff? This isn't really time for comments or opinions on the.
Right. Steven, could you identify those exceptions, just specifically each?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Each one you're, there's a lot going on here.
So the two, the two primary ones are the, the building orientation. So one of the design guidelines standards says that all the units shall orient to the street, and these are technically private lanes, not public streets. So, and they're actually not oriented to even the lane, they're oriented front doors to the internal courtyard. So that's the same design that occurred on Block 13, and they're requesting a similar exception be granted here. The other exception is for the, the floor area allowance for the single-family home units along the perimeter of the property to the south and to the southwest. They're showing units that exceed 2,400 square feet marginally for their three-story units and then, you know, somewhat significantly for their four-story units. So whether or not you support both allowances, if you only support three-story allowances, we'll need to remove the fourth floor, the fourth floor allowance from these FTP sheets, that type of thing. Those are the two primary ones. There are some, you know, more minor requests for different landscaping within, within, and it's just like an extension of the, the species list, which we get for every application. And this one is probably more justified just due to the, the topography of the site in terms of finding landscaping and species that'll is appropriate for the locations that they're proposing in, so.
So are you, so are you saying these, the front door is facing the?
Facing the courtyard.
Facing the courtyard, so it's not even, and then so the garages are here?
So yeah, I mean, basically, when you have an alley loaded product as, as proposed, you're going to have your garages along the alleyway. So the front doors have been oriented to face, this is Outlot L, within the center of Block 25.
But you also said we've done, we did that in the other development, the same?
Very consistent proposal is what we saw for Block 20, or Block 13, for the northeast.
And one question on the, on the four-story, are the height, when we go to four-story, are we within the height, height limits though, even though?
It is within the height limits.
Okay.
So the, the height, the maximum height proposed for this block is, is close to 50 feet, and the height allowance for Block 25 is 55.
And you had some concerns about the transition. Can you just go over that again, the transition differences?
So, yeah, I mean, if you, if, it's, it's a massing issue and a height, height issue, but the, the transition, I just want everyone to be aware, was pretty clearly discussed earlier this year that Block 14 and 26 would remain at 32 feet, no exceptions. So there's a 32-foot to 55-foot height discrepancy between these two blocks. And whether or not you have a fourth, four-story product or a three-story product along these edges will change that transition. And the heights are closer to, you know, 38, 40 feet for the three-story product and somewhere between, I think, 47 to 50 feet for the four-story product.
So we have an eight to 10-foot difference even between these homes and what's in here?
No, I'm saying that if you go from, as they go from.
From here, it's 32 feet to 50.
32, yeah.
Okay, but back here, these are, there's only about, there's less of a difference, right? But it's still?
These are, these are shorter, so that's, uh, these are 40-some, around 40 feet, a little bit less even for the townhomes in here.
Okay, and then these are 45, 42 to 47 is?
Up to 50, yeah.
Up to 50, but.
In which way is it sloping, Steve?
It slopes, so this is kind of the, the peak, and it slopes both to the, to the north and to the, to the east and to the south. So everything kind of falls off from, from roughly this point here. But it slopes down, and you have, so you'll have those 104 units that are kind of built, you know, with a three-story facade along this edge, and it goes to two stories here. And then these have the two-story facade, and then it goes to three stories as it falls down the hill.
And, and so the, where the, where it transitions from the other development down where the four-story homes are?
That's here.
No, not there, down on the bottom.
Oh, down.
Down there, yeah. So it's, that's looking up the hill, so it's, it goes to 32 feet to 40 feet, but it's still, it's sloping uphill?
This is uphill.
So it's a significant, great, there's a significant difference in, in the appearance of the height because of the grade change.
Right, that's what, and I think that's what you went over in one of your, one of the things.
Yeah.
Because you said in some of them, there's like a 20-foot difference, even though the height distance is only eight to 10.
Right.
Well, forget, yeah, if you could go back there, just that one, yep. So this is what you're talking about here?
Right.
Okay.
So this shows a four-story product that's 48 feet, and then this one's 39 feet, but the height difference between the two measures closer to 15 feet when you factor in the grade.
Can you go back to the, the drawing you were just at, the, the map? So when we approved, this is Discovery up here, right? It's just the, so when?
Yep.
Yeah, so when we approved this, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, how they might be able to get down, that we couldn't really put a requirement on anybody to provide ADA access, but now that this is coming around, I guess it's worth asking, is there any opportunity to, to, to provide?
The ADA access.
ADA access in, into the downtown area?
The ADA access would come down the street, the same way that was discussed.
Okay.
During this application.
Alright, so nothing, nothing could happen here, the grade's just too great to?
I think you can actually get in this way.
Here?
But I think there's stairs here, so I think the only ADA access, we'd have to look at the, the plans that close, so I think you have to come down to the south, the south part of Block 25 to get across, and then back up into Prominon Drive.
Okay. And we just talked about if there was an opportunity to do something in here to make it a little shorter getting in, but.
Yeah, this isn't any easier than.
But it's just so, it's so steep.
The DOP subdivision.
Okay. Any other questions for Steven?
And then would you want to transition to the applicant's presentation or to the?
Yes, what do you think? Do you want to see the 3D ahead of time, or do you want to listen to the applicant's presentation? I'm tempted to look at the 3D and.
I'd like to see a 3D.
Yeah. A little more meaningful, yes. I'll just reiterate how awesome I think this is. Thank you for doing this. It is, it's extremely helpful.
Right.
Yeah.
He's not.
Good evening. Chase Mullins, MIG. I'm going to just kind of do some overview, poke down a, a couple of the corridors, and then you guys feel free to stop me and, and, and push me where you'd like me to go. Alright, just a little orientation there. Obviously, that's, that's west, kind of headed north here, looking into it from the, from the southern corner. And likewise, in here, I can toggle, I, I, the, the single-family homes I brought in here are both the kind of the three-story and the four-story versions. On the near ground, those kind of orange, more orange buildings are from the, from the previous edge of, you know, the, the previous development when just that edge of, of 25 was approved. Discovery Residential there on the right.
Yes.
Okay.
So there's, there's that.
Yeah, let's go through four now, we can go back, maybe have you zip through at three stories. And so that, that's back at three now?
Correct.
Okay.
This is the southern edge here. Climbing towards, climbing up Discovery.
So this is the ADA access route, right? They would come down Discovery Parkway and?
Correct.
All the way around, yep. Could you turn back around to look at Discovery just while you're standing there? Yeah, thanks. And just, just look down that, look down the road, yep, great. Okay, thank you.
Is there a sidewalk along Discovery there?
On Discovery, there is.
There is.
He's in Canary Lane, or he was in Canary Lane a second ago.
They're looking back down the hill.
Yeah, so this is essentially that, you know, kind of the alley-loaded access here.
Is that Canary Lane, or is it just?
That's Canary Lane.
That's Canary Lane.
And there are some opportunities for landscaping in Canary Lane, which Chase has reflected, which we didn't get in Block 13, but it's largely because of the, the shape of the lot, or the shape of the block. The paved alleys, a minimum of 26 feet in width, but the separation for the alleys, they range like generally between 30 or 29 and 31 feet. I think some of them expand as far as 33 feet. And then their separation, the separation between the buildings is oftentimes greater. There's usually three feet on either side of what's platted to the alley, but each of these alleys is platted at a different width, so they're not, I can tell you the minimum, but I can't tell you the minimum offhand, which we can go and look though.
Can you flip the four-story? Are we on, or, yeah, okay, alright. And maybe just toggle three-story again. Maybe tuck in your mic so he can hear you.
Sorry.
Can we go down to Outlot L, which is the landscaped?
The central courtyard in the middle. Gracefully jump off that.
So is that that retain, is that a retaining wall there?
Correct, on the left there.
I just wanted to quickly, quickly mention that the applicant has a video with all the landscaping in this area rendered a little bit.
Could you just identify yourself so we have that?
I'm sorry, yeah, sorry, superior. I just wanted to quickly mention that there's a video the applicant has that has all the landscaping rendered in more detail than this. If you want to look at how that sort of central area looks, I would recommend just waiting for the, the video, which has it.
Okay.
Rendered a little more detail.
We'll look at that too, great.
May I ask, are the shadows accurate? I mean, do they reflect sunlight at a particular time of day?
They, they are, in fact. Is there a time that you'd like to see? So this is April 1st around 11:00. So we can push these. So something more in the summer.
There's a lot of, a lot of shadow in the afternoon in the central area, and it's sun for just, getting dark in there about 2 o'clock, 2:30, or shaded, I should say. If you go, just go into December, I'm just curious, what's the short?
Well, that, that is 7:30 in the morning.
Yeah, that's come on.
So that's 11:00, noon 1:02.
Wow, there's just no light in there, in the courtyard and the, and the, I mean, that probably ought to be considered with landscaping.
That's what I was saying.
Maintenance.
They get in there and shovel that. The snow won't melt if it snows, and the landscaping will need attention.
You just toggle three and four, three-story and four-story, go ahead and.
Also, is there a way, excuse me, to look from the rooftop of the four-story unit back to the south and east? And from ground level? And from ground level? And those shaded areas, are those existing homes or are they?
No, the homes across the street shown there are the Thrive Homes from their proposal that didn't, didn't get approved. So those, it's conceptual in terms of what the height, you know, at 32 feet would be across the street, but that's not an approved project.
Same for block 26 over there, thanks. We're sorry, there's another view you asked for? From the ground level, did you say as well?
Yes, can you do ground level?
Yeah.
Looking back to the south and east?
Simply that's this way.
Thank you.
Any other views?
You're getting dizzy, okay. Do your toggle one more time just from this angle, three and four. Okay. Awesome, thank you. Thank you. Right. Steven, are we ready to go on to an applicant presentation? Do you have anything else?
Yep.
All right. So does the applicant have a presentation? I assume you do. Make sure each of you just introduce yourself when you come up to the podium for the first time.
Good evening. Bill Jank, RC Superior. Great to see everybody and happy holidays. So we're excited to be here with, with Remington tonight. This project and this FDP started with a concept plan presentation July 10th of 2017, about a year and a half ago. And that was concurrent, same meeting with, with the Thrive concept presentation that we, we did at the same time. And then subsequently, the FDP was submitted in October of 2017, about just over, just over a year ago. And so I just wanted to highlight, I'm going to let Remington walk through their, their presentation and the details. They've done a really nice job, I think, of, of designing the product for this site. They've, they've made a serious commitment to the project and to the town by coming in and designing a custom project or product for this hillside, kind of difficult site, the slope so much from the top of the site down. I think it's going to be a really exciting and interesting product with the walkout basements and garages, depending on where you are on the hillside. And I just wanted to highlight kind of how much momentum we have coming into the new year with Downtown Superior as a whole. I know some of you were at the latest town board work session, but this is the first of about at least six FDPs that we're hoping to get through the approval process in the next nine months. So we're starting with block 25 here for Remington. Next, you'll see block 26 and 27, which is a combination of Remington with Thrive Homes that we're trying to bring to you, planning commission in January. Following that, we'll have block 16 through 24, which is the whole south part of the site for Toll Brothers, trying to get that on an early, early summer approval timeline. And then following that, we're looking at the Main Street Core blocks 5, 6, 9, 10, 11 for Morgan Ranch, which is shooting for an August approval. And then following that, we likely have a hotel interested in block 1, lot 3, be sort of in the northeast corner of the site next to Element, across the street from Element, right up against 36, which we would be trying to get that approved in September. So all that, just to say, with those approvals, all that leaves really is blocks 2, 5, and 8 that still need to be contracted and dealt with. So we have an opportunity here, all of that land that I just mentioned is already under contract with builders. We have an opportunity to see kind of explosive growth, consistent with the PD and with the vision for this mixed-use, walkable, vibrant project that we've all been talking about for so long. This project and the other residential projects that you're going to see following it are part of that vision. We've always kind of talked about how retail follows rooftops and I know that everyone's most excited about the parks and the retail Main Street and the walkability. But these, these, these people who are going to move into these homes are an important part of that equation. We need to get these rooftops, you know, approved and, and built so that we can kind of drive that, that progress into that Main Street and those parks. So I'm excited about this. I think it's a great, great design. I think Remington's done a really good job over the last year. And I'm obviously here for any questions as we walk through the presentation, but I'll hand it over to Remington.
Steve Knoll with Remington Homes. Want to thank everybody for being here tonight, especially Steven. He's put a lot of work in this over the last year. So he kind of stole most of my thunder, obviously, and what I was going to talk about. So I'm just going to try to highlight some of the stuff and if I, you guys have any questions or anything that I can answer, please feel free, please feel free to ask. So I want to start with a little overview of Remington. These are primarily the projects that we've done in the west side of town in the last 10 years. So you can see we have a pretty good presence on the west side of town on most of the projects that we've done. We're primarily based in Arvada, so our home office is down there. We did a lot of development, Lion Rock, Whisper Creek down there, and we're starting to branch out into Candellas quite a bit down there. So we've been building Energy Star Homes here in Colorado for about 15 years now. And what I really like about Energy Star Homes is it provides a better quality product for the buyer. It's more durable, it's more comfortable to live in, it costs less to live in, and it's a healthier house. To go along with that, every house that we've done has been energy rated, tested for probably about 15 years now. And we give them HERS scores. The index rating here on the right kind of shows, you know, the typical existing house is probably about 130 on the HERS rating. So this is like your golf score. The better your, the lower the score, the better. A new home, a typical new home that you'll see built by one of the big production builders here in town probably scores close to 100. The houses that we build, anywhere in town, will score about 50. And so we're real proud of that. Block 25 is what we're here to talk about. It's an extension of block 13. So the 101, 102, and 103 plans, we built in block 13 with a different elevation. We're bringing those over. So we put those on the flat areas of the site and as we've been talking about all night long, there's a lot of topography on this site. So we had to introduce a walkout townhouse and we had to introduce a tuck-under, as we call it. So the garage is in the basement and you walk upstairs to the front door in the living area. So those are the 104 plans or the tuck-unders and the 105 are our walkout plans. And then a continuation of the single-family houses will be built along Village Green and Discovery, which is the exact same product that we built in block 13. We have reskinned the elevations a little bit to kind of match or to go along more with the design that's in block 25. And we have a great little video we'd like to show you here. This is a landscape plan kind of showing the green space areas and the, and this is in your packet, but it shows what is a turf area, which is the dark green. And then the light greens are more of a native area that's kind of a low grow native and those are on the steep hillsides. So we've put a turf area, which this was at the request of the town, so we turfed as much as we possibly could in this area. So I'd like to, I guess it's probably this mouse, isn't it? Nope. Oh, there it goes. So this is a video of block 25. So what you're going to be looking at is, these buildings are precise. Okay. These buildings are precise in what they're going to look like. You can see we've represented the four-story product and the three-story product and the single-family. Here, this is on Village Green, or this is Discovery Parkway. You're looking kind of to the, call it to the north there. This is the internal courtyard on block 25 currently that we're showing. So you're seeing some of the, the walk, the tuck-under, tuck-unders and walkouts. This is looking north out of the courtyard. So you're, they're up on one of the decks. And so this was some of the flat product and you can see the three-story townhouses with some of the slope. We're standing on the upper walk, looking down to the lower walk. And then this is the steep hillside that's in the north section and you can see the retaining wall highlighted in this that we talked about, that has to pick up some of the grade between the buildings on right, the walkout, and the tuck-unders that were down below. Okay. Got to get out of that. Let's close it here.
Anthony, do you have a question?
Actually, could you go back to that? I'd like to hear more about the tuck-under and get a better look at what that looks like.
Okay, well, I, I have some.
Explanation as to really what that means.
So, yeah, let me, did we put some renderings of the tuck-unders in here? I think, bear with me for a second, because I think I got some, we have some still photos of the video and I'll be happy to go back to the video. But let me see, I might have a, a little bit better, better example of that for you further into the, into the program here. If not, I'll go back to it. So here's the renderings that I was talking about. So these are our single-family houses. And so this is looking across the street and we have the, one of the four stories depicted here next to two of the three stories. You can see the same here where we've shown a three-story with some of the four stories going up the street and another three-story there. So that's what the single-family houses will look like from Village Green or Discovery Parkway. This is the internal courtyard that we talked about. You can see some of the slope coming down here that we're trying to maintain. So this, these houses along here, the 103s that we're trying to put what we would call on the flat lots, which have the more traditional where the front door is on the main, you know, in this case, these are identical to what we built in the block 13 where the front door is on the same level of the garage. And then you walk up one story, so your main living space is on the second floor, on the, is on the second floor. It's real similar to what we did in block 13. These right here are the same. This is just the different view of this. So this is looking down from this same walkway right here, looking up at those tuck-unders. And to. What you can see here is, so we're down below, and I apologize, I don't kind of remember the alley names. This is the alley that's.
That's Meridian.
Meridian. And so this is the, the stairs going up to the courtyard and you're looking at one of our walkout buildings right here, which has the, the door in the lower level, which will have a bedroom in the lower level with it. And then the living space and the garage is on the second floor, in this case, the main level. So on the backside of this, this would be the alley portion of the house. And let's see. And this doesn't really show it real well, but this is the tuck-under garage is, the units right here. So the main level is what has the patio and the front door. And you have to walk downstairs to get to the garage, to the alley level. Okay? Some different, just some different angles of that. You can see here that this is the slope of the walkout building. So the front door would be on this level here. The garage would be on the second level with the main. And we've been talking about this all night long, but wanted to make sure we highlighted this. These are the two kind of variances that we have for the project. One is the square footage of the units. So the typology for the single-family allows for 2,400 square feet and our, our plans are coming in at 2,480, 2,560, and 20, 2,534 for our three-story. And then our four stories are 2,978, 3085, and then the 3045. So we're over on all of these from the 2,400 square feet. I do want to point out that these are the same square footages that we built on block 13. So we haven't changed these floor plans at all. I guess the reason why these floor plans probably are as big as they are is we're trying to maximize the interior usable space of the house, you know, to give it kind of the cost benefit to the buyer to get that. And then the other big one is this, we're asking, you know, for direction from the staff on the front doors facing the courtyard. They don't face the street. Again, real similar to what we had on block 13. Some, just the, some of the data that we've been talking about all night long. I guess I do want to point out that we don't, our proposed heights are all under the 55-foot height that's allowed for block 25. So we don't need any exceptions there. Our townhouses in general have zero-foot setbacks. That's to make sure that we have all of the buildings with inside the building envelope, projections, some cantilevers, ideas like that. On the single-family, we have a three-foot side setback. When you actually look at the building, we actually have set it three and a half feet off of the property line for some code reasons to make sure we have six-foot building separation between units, which is what code allows. And that's measured from sighting to sighting. So we just want to make sure that we have enough allowance there. So that's why we do that, that's why we did that. And again, we talked about just the size of the units earlier, but we need no exceptions on any, anything on this table. Again, this is just highlighting our setback criteria and the allowed 55-foot tall for block 25 with our proposed building heights all underneath the 55-foot. And I think one of the questions that maybe has come up before that I'll maybe address right now is, in like the case of our 803 plan, you know, our three-story plan is 42 feet 10 inches. And when you go to the three, four-story, it's 47 feet 5 inches. The reason why is because the plate height in the third story, when we don't have the four-story on it for the master bedroom, is a 12-foot plate height. And when we put the four-story on, that drops down to a nine-foot plate height. And then the plate height in the four-story is nine foot. So we're reducing the plate height on the third floor when the four-story gets added. So that's why it's not going up by eight or nine foot increment. We have put all of our plan tipicals on here, just showing that they all are within side of the building, or within the property lines, all within the setbacks and all showing the, meeting all the, all the easement criteria. So here's our 101 plan, our 102, our 103, which were our, all three of our flat townhouses. And then our 104. So all the 101, 102, and 103 are all 20-foot wide units. And we've allowed the lots on the end units to be 22 feet wide. The building does not get wider. We're just allowing for the projections of the side to make sure we have those inside of the property line. And then when we get to the 104, it's a little bit wider unit at 25 feet wide. Same thing where we put a two-foot, additional two feet on the side to make sure we have any projections, roof overhangs and anything like that inside of the property. And then the 105 is also a 25-foot wide product. And same thing with the two-foot there. And then on our single-family, so what we talked about is we have a three-foot side setback, but the house is actually three foot, three inches off of the side of the property on both sides to accommodate for the building separation of six feet. We have a two-foot setback in the front. And the setback on the, on the rear, we've asked for a zero-foot setback. There's a three-foot easement and the house typically is two feet off the back property line. So there's, there's a, a foot of the house in the back easement. So there's, uh, there's a, a foot of the house in the back easement on the, on the single-family. So there's the 801, 802 is the same, and 803. So, thank you. I guess if there's any questions for me or...
Um, it's okay, I was just in respect of the people who are here that wanted to speak, maybe let them speak and then we can go back to questions for the applicant. And maybe he can address some of their concerns and questions. And is that, is that okay to you? Okay. Yeah, just give us a few minutes. All right. So just in the spirit of respecting your time, if, if you have public comment, um, now would be a great time to come speak. And if you have that write-up that you read earlier, if you, if that's written up and you could leave it with us, if you'll bring it up, I'll get it included in the minutes. And then I know there was at least one follow-up comment. Oh, uh, Phyllis needs one, we can pass the others around. But yeah, if you want to, yeah, I'll just take them and get them handed out. Thanks, mate. And then one to Phyllis. Those two can share that, we can share this one.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Paul Richards. I live at 201 8th Avenue. Three years ago, my wife and I met with Remington Home Salesmen to purchase a new home at Coal Creek Crossing. A major selling point from Remington was that the interior five-acre common area would be seeded with native grasses and professionally landscaped to give it a park-like appearance. Now, three years later, it has still not happened despite multiple seedings, partial or no watering, drainage issues, noxious weeds, and an assortment of other problems. Remington has repeatedly requested that Coal Creek Crossing residents be patient, invoking the mantra that native grasses takes years to grow. We appreciate the town's continued assistance in requiring Remington to complete what we paid for. We kindly request that Remington finish what they promised and what is specified in the final development plan before embarking on a new subdivision or project such as what we've seen tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Greg.
My name is Ron Brave and I'm also a homeowner in Coal Creek Crossing. And, uh, I sat in your seats in Eagle County as a planning commissioner for seven years. Uh, some of the things that I just witnessed, uh, I wish we'd have had back then, but, uh, wow. One of the things that, uh, really is deceiving when you look at something like these gorgeous renderings are these mature trees that we're looking at and mature landscaping. And in order to get to that point, the landscaping's got to be planted properly. Now, in our community, I know for a fact that the trees were not planted properly. The ground was barely scraped and the root balls were placed on top and backfilled with stone and clay. There was no soil put into the holes where the trees were going to go. And the holes are supposed to be a minimum of at least twice the size of the root ball. You can't just stick a tree basically on top of the ground. I saw the way they were dug. They were dug with like ditch witches that just basically scraped the top of the ground enough that they could put the rock and clay back in place. There was no root stimulator put in with the soil. There was, there was nothing done to assure that these trees had a, a half a chance to make it past the first year or maybe even the second. We've already replaced 22 trees that have died simply because they were improperly planted and taken care of. The other thing that I try to stress to the community is, you know, trees need a couple of things, just like about any other living organism. They need oxygen, they need food, and they need water. There was no drip system put in with any of these trees. Yeah, where it was nice and cheap to put around the landscaping, they did put in drip system, but not for the trees. When you have communities like this, where you have homeowners that are moving in and looking at a mammoth property to take care of and to get established, there's got to be some serious planning for all the landscaping that's going in. If you ever expect it to look like the renderings that you've just seen, beautiful, mature, green, beautiful, it's not going to be that way if you don't make sure that the landscaping goes in properly and that it's maintained, at least for a couple of years, to give it a good start. It shouldn't be your new homeowner's responsibility in the common areas to realize in the first year that they've got to be watering. We're in, we're in high desert here. We're in desert. If you don't water these trees all winter long, they're never going to make it. And all I can say to you is, please, give some assurance to the new people who are moving in that they won't have to go through total replacement like we are currently going through and the struggles to get Remington to do what they promised they were going to do. We're still, we're still fighting with these guys. But don't understand why they've decided that our property was the hill to take the stand on to fight. It doesn't make sense to me. They want to do these gorgeous, beautiful projects and they won't finish what they've already started. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Bill Emery. I'm also a homeowner in Coal Creek Crossing. Um, I'm the only person that's here from the former board of directors. I have no longer. You have some members of the new board here. Um, I just want to report that all of this emotion you heard is justified. We went through repeated meetings with Remington. We were promised a lot. We received very little or nothing. And we ended up realizing that our voice was not going to be heard by Remington. And we started dealing with the town of Superior. We got more satisfaction, at least some recourse was offered to us. But nothing has really happened. And we are faced with, as you know, um, a lack of the landscaping that was promised us. And, and it's a real sore point, as you can tell, for the whole community. And all, all of the board members from the previous board are happy we're no longer on the board because we didn't have to deal with this aggravation anymore. And so we have a new board and hopefully they'll be able to deal with it. But it's not a lot of fun being between the Coal Creek Crossing. This is a really great community. This is a community that has progressive dinners and the women get together once a month and the men get together every two weeks for breakfast. It's a close community and we're all fighting the same battle. So I, I hope that you, you know, the town of Superior continues to listen and help and, you know, Remington will step up to doing what they said they're supposed to do. I mean, what, they're going to do something more. I, I hope these guys are willing to part with landscaping.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yep.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Lauren Chevalier. Um, I'm a Broomfield resident. I, I currently live in one of the multifamily condos in the Via Vara development. And I've been looking at downtown Superior very anxiously. And I was probably a little bit late to the party in terms of some of the, the initial build, um, and including Remington's current product that, which I believe sold out pretty quickly. Um, I'm, I'm looking at these renderings and I find them beautiful. And as you probably know, Broomfield is a progressive community. I'm proud to live in Broomfield, but this is something that would bring me away from Broomfield to the town of Superior. And I think that there would be a lot of people who will be drawn to this kind of a development um, to help fulfill the whole vill, the whole vision of what downtown Superior is all about. And I, I hope for the opportunity to, to be one of the, the future residents in, in this development. So I, it looks beautiful to me.
Thank you. Any other comments? Uh, yep.
My key is Coal Creek Crossing, 115 6th Avenue. I didn't bring my notebook up, so you're real safe. I just wanted to say, I don't think anybody in this room has complaints about Remington as a builder. What we do have a problem with is Remington is keeping his word and taking on more than he can chew. And I don't want to see that happen to any other residents. And I want us to get fixed before you guys give him any more work because he can't handle it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, sounds good. Um, so maybe next step, if we have, maybe if the applicant wants to respond to any of this, they're welcome to. Or if we have questions, we can handle it that way. How do you, want to take questions or do you want to, do you have anything else you want to present?
Uh, thanks, Bill Jenks, again, R.C. Superior. So I can't speak to Coal Creek Crossing, so I'm sorry. This won't directly address any of the, the comments here. But I will say that, uh, because this project proposed is in downtown Superior, it's a, you know, completely different, um, contractual setup on, on the landscaping. The, the Metro District and R.C. Superior are responsible for installing and maintaining all the landscaping and sidewalks and public or semi-public, um, green spaces in, in the area. So, uh, any question about the installation remains of landscaping should fall to me and to the Metro District, who are responsible for the rest of all, all the green space and parks and everything else in, in downtown Superior. We do have a very robust, uh, landscape maintenance program. We do winter watering every, every winter on all of the trees and landscaping that need it. Um, we will be doing, uh, snow plowing, um, via manual shovels and ATVs on those public walks that go down the middle of the, the space. Um, so if there's any concern about, um, snow removal, the Met, Metro District handles that. Uh, and also there's full, full irrigation for all these trees and all of the, even the native seed has full irrigation, uh, to it as proposed in this plan. So just wanted to address that.
Thank you. So questions for the applicant? Oh, um, yes, we can take one more public comment, that's fine.
What you described is, is wonderful.
And if you could do me a favor, you need to address the commission and, and...
Yeah, I'm, I'm Ron Brave and all I'm saying is, what was just described is exactly what should happen. And, uh, I would like to figure out how we can fix Coal Creek Crossing. And, uh, I know it's not appropriate to link the two together, but the fact of the matter is, it's the only leverage we have. We need your help.
Thank you. Commissioners, I would just allow the, the applicant just to respond to that public comment as well. Yeah, so, yeah, I, I offered that earlier. If, if there's any desire to respond to the public comment, um, you have an opportunity to do that now?
Guillaume Pouchot, Remington Homes. Uh, I've been involved with Coal Creek Crossing for a long time as well. My name?
Yes.
Guillaume Pouchot, Remington Homes. So I'll just give, uh, you know, there's always two sides of the story, obviously. And, uh, I mean, on behalf of Remington Homes, we're not happy about what happened in Coal Creek, but we're here. You know, we are no, we didn't leave. We're still managing the site. And just to give you the background, uh, that site at 53 homes, it sold in 18 months. And then essentially we took about two years of construction. And then we started the implementation of the landscaping. The first time around, which was, uh, at least for the subject matter tonight on, uh, on the native grasses and the park, we did the initial seeding, if I remember right, about September 2016. And, uh, the contractor that we used did not do it right, plain and simple. We kind of knew that, but it took time for us to realize that. Essentially, we went through the winter in 2016. We didn't see any germination, nothing for the cold weather seeds. And then we were hoping for the spring seeds, you know, to germinate properly, which did not happen. And we started getting, getting worried by the end of the spring 2017. So what we did is that we, uh, we ended up putting a temporary irrigation, which is not required, but we did it at our own cost in order to see if, you know, the seeds that were planted would take on, which they did not. And at the same time, we ended up seeing a lot of, a lot of weeds. The park didn't look good. We were not happy with it. So we ended up, for lack of a better word, we ended up nuking the entire site, sorry, in 2017, and I think it was about beginning of August. So we removed all the weeds. We ended up regrading the entire site. And then we brought back all the equipments and we did it right this time around, drills seeded and, uh, and essentially fertilized the entire site, uh, the park for, for the cold season, you know, in 2017. So it created a lot of frustration. We've been in constant contact with the board, the HOA board of Coal Creek Crossing, with Matt Magley and the staff at the town of Superior. And we were as frustrated as the community. Uh, in the meantime, we've always paid for the maintenance, you know, the landscaper and all the charges for that. We took care of it. We are still paying for it. We are paying for the water. And we're still here. We're not going anywhere, you know? We are in constant contact. And I think as you've heard before, now we are going through Matt and, uh, Matt Magley is handling the communication with the board. And, uh, we have committed to seed more over the, the spring. We'll see what's going on over, over the winter. But, uh, whatever was done, uh, I would say in fall 2017, we saw really good results in 2018. And if you do native grasses, I think the expectation and what we've tried to convey, at least, you know, is that it doesn't happen in a year. And I understand everybody is frustrated, but it's kind of like, it took a while because we were under construction and everything got so fast, you know, for, you ended up having 53 residents with a park that was just dirt. And nobody likes that. We don't like that. But that was, you know, we were a victim of our own success in a way. So what we saw in 2018 was very encouraging. We've been working with the, uh, CSU Extension, Darren Davidson, who was hired by the, the HOA board. And we've been in close contact with her. She's been giving us, uh, good recommendations. And I think she's pretty positive in what she saw in 2018. And the plan that we put forth for 2019 is fully aligned with her. So we have a, you know, a list of things to do to finish the park, which we will. We're adding temporary irrigation on the east berm, which was not addressed back in 2017. And, uh, we are fixing the few drainage issues that you've heard about, you know, in, in the comments previously. And, uh, we'll be there until the end. That's all I can say. Our expectation is by the end, uh, of the summer 2019, this park will be fully established. And I think what you see today, what you could, what you could see over this year is very encouraging. So I understand people are frustrated. We're frustrated. We apologize, you know? And, uh, we're still here and we'll do it until the end.
Can, can, can we ask questions?
Yeah, most certainly.
We've talked about the trees with Matt, Magley, and, uh, we are taking...
Hey, if, um, we, we can't really have conversation from the podium back to the audience.
But I was going to ask the exact same question. So how are you addressing the watering of the trees in a longer term? It sounds like you say you're going to put in temporary irrigation for, um, for the wild, wild grass and things. And what about permanent irrigation for the trees and for the wild grass? Why is that not part of this?
So per the plan, we did not, we did not need to have permanent irrigation. We ended up adding that temporary irrigation. And honestly, the only difference is to put it underground to be permanent. But we have that overground irrigation system right now in the center park, the big three-acre park that you can see when you drive Coal Creek Drive. And we're putting on the east berm, additional temporary irrigation so that... And we're putting on the east berm additional temporary irrigation so that, you know, we get it green all year round, per the requirement from the HOA board. If you go back to all the plans, landscape plans, irrigation plans, none of that is required, which we are doing anyway because of the frustration and just the time that was spent and the original mistake that was made by our contractor. So we take responsibility on that and we're trying to act. In regards to the trees, we know that some trees died and we are in conversation and discussion with Matt Magley on that and we'll do what's required in terms of replacing the trees and planting them the right way. Now, when it comes to a drip system for the trees, we can look at it as well, but I, I don't think originally it was required nor mandated by the plans that we have.
And, and I understand it might not have been mandated, but I, I kind of, I live in this area too, we all do. It is a desert climate and I know if I don't water my trees in the winter, they die. And so I've got the same concerns that, I, I hear the same thing that they're saying is that unless we get water to those, and it might not have been part of your plan, but to me that's an oversight in your plan.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think, you know, most of the trees that you see have some sort of irrigation, that being on the tree lawn or being, you know, the sprinkler heads rotating 360 from, from the backyard. So I would not say that all the trees don't have irrigation. I would say the majority of the trees have irrigation to that. There might be some trees who do not and we'll take the action to really look at that and make sure we fix it. That's my commitment.
And are, and are you addressing the, even around the outside of the perimeter of the, I mean, there's some berms up there, they look the same, it's just, I just live a block away from that, so I walk through that every day and it's just a mess. It is, it's, I mean, it's beautiful, I mean, it's a beautiful subdivision, the homes are, are well-designed, the streets, I mean, the areas that are, are landscaped are stunning and then you walk back in there and it's like, what the heck happened, you know, here? And, but the berms and around the edges are that way as well? Is that all in...
That's where we will install the, the additional temporary irrigation.
Okay. Okay. Alright, any other questions for the...
In full disclosure, I should say, I live in Coal Creek Crossing as well, 104 Sixth Avenue. I mean, my comment on this is that building a development without completing the landscaping is like building a home and not painting it. It's not a large part of the project, but it has a big impact on the result. I mean, I think your reputation is damaged by the fact that you haven't done better on this. And in addition to being very aggravating for the homeowners, I mean, I know that over the last two years, we've had a lot of conversations and received a lot of promises from Remington about what you're going to do. There hasn't been nearly as much action. You're saying you have a plan that you're going to execute it. I hope that when we're sitting here at this time next year, that it will all be done.
Do we want to move on to the further discussion of the plan at hand? I, I want to thank everyone for the public comment. We've heard you loud and clear and we'll discuss as appropriate as we move through this and go from there. And you're all welcome to stay as we continue going through, so. Let's pause for a minute while we let everyone exit. Do we need any more 3D? Are we good? Can Chase go? We all? I don't think we need anymore. Do you? No, I think he's welcome to go, so.
Thank you, Chase. Thank you.
I'm going to, we just take a two-minute break, let things settle down?
It's actually addressed in here, they have more parking, I think that, what was it? That they're supposed to have 150, I forget how many parking spaces this person has.
Do they all have like two, like two?
They're all two-car garage, something like that. I think the two, the two two-bedroom units.
Great, you come on up. So make sure we're back, we're back on.
I hear you loud and clear, you know, and I'll say that myself, the owner of Remington Homes, Reagan Hartman, and a host of guys have been behind this project, Coal Creek Crossing, trying to fix it. I'm as aggravated as you are, I can't stand it. We've done native grasses on the west side of town, thousands of acres. We've done it many times. And, you know, this time around, like I said, I think we were a victim of our success and a set of circumstances that was against us, you know, the soil is very rocky, but I'm not going to make excuses. At the end of the day, it's not good enough and it's not up to the standard of Remington Homes. So, you know, we take it very seriously. Like I said, you know, we're not going anywhere, we're going to fix it. It's going to take the time it's going to take, you know, mother nature has to do its work. But we'll be there until the end. So when I hear people being frustrated, I get it, you know, I understand it and I don't blame anybody. At the same time, I don't think it's fair for people to say that we don't fulfill our responsibility or we shy away from our work, which we have never done and we won't ever because we stand by our word and our commitment is gold. So that's it, that's all I got to say.
We got you on public record, so that's good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have questions, comments for this development and, I don't know, do you want to start, Anthony? I keep the public hearing open so that they can respond and just take questions and such.
Absolutely, I just, I just have a couple of questions. First, let me say that, thank you, Stephen, for doing a great job in this presentation. Covered a lot of material and by the time I was through it, I was pretty well-informed about this, this project. And thank you, Remington Homes, for presenting such a, a good product for our community and for our neighborhoods. I also wanted to say before I forget that I, that I also want to thank you for stepping up and making a number of your homes ADA accessible, so we appreciate that. One of the questions I had is kind of more of, along a kind of visual and looking at the renderings and looking at the plans that we had, I wondered if there are additional plans or are you able to provide additional detail and clarity about how you'll keep all of these homes from looking the same? You know, your color schemes and your color palettes are pretty similar. And, you know, what, what things, if any, or what plans do you have, if any, for addressing that issue?
And I, I'll echo that as well, we just see, it just becomes monotonous as you move through these new developments.
Sure, so I think to answer your, your first question was, we have eight different color schemes that were all selected by a professional color expert. You know, I don't think they have a, a license, so, but we used the same gal that does, she does this all day long. These were the same color schemes that we used for Block 13 in there. And so the primary difference between Block 13 and Block 25 is that Block 13 was, it had a lot more brick on it, was, I hate to use the word predominantly brick, but it had a lot more brick on it. We did use stone on Block 13 and Block 25 is going to be predominantly stone. And so if you look at, is Stephen trying to find her?
Yeah, you got your color renderings in here, I think. I'll pull up the F2.
It's the very last sheet after these, so you're good, keep going. Oh, no. It's, oh, it's probably in the, it's in the, it's not in the colored set, Stephen, it's in the...
It's in the rendering?
Yes, it's in the black and white set. We put the color schemes in the black and white set.
That makes sense.
So, and I think if you look at the renderings too, the renderings give you a really, so there's, there's, there's two different style of stones that we used and we tried to alternate those in between the interior and exterior of the buildings and you can see that on the renderings. And then we've also committed to essentially laying out what units would get what color scheme on them and will be, we don't have that yet, that was something Steve asked us, that was one of the exceptions, Stephen asked us to provide, so we will provide that. So, yep.
What the heck? Yeah, I just went all the way back down.
No, it's, it's just, it's, I saw, I saw one of them, Stephen.
I know, and then it jumped all the way down.
Oh, I see, okay, yeah. So there's the eight color schemes we have and the, the stone pattern goes with, so there's, so if you look at the top four, there's two, it's the same stone pattern, but there's two different colors of stone there on those. And then those would be predominantly used on the exterior units and then we have a flatter, more castle-like stone. If you scroll down, that'll be used on the interior units to help kind of break up the texture and look at that. And if you look at the colored renderings, you can really see a great kind of example of what that's going to do. And then we won't use the same color schemes next door to one another, you know, we'll make sure they're at least separated by one unit. And frankly, with eight color schemes, you probably won't see more than, you know, you might have one that gets used twice on a building, you know, if it's a seven-plex building or something. I don't think we actually have any seven-plexes in these, they're all, we have a five-plex if I remember. So we won't use the same color scheme on the buildings, but you can kind of see from these drawings how...
I'll find something a little more head-on.
Yeah, there, there's, that's, there's kind of a good example there, how those two different units have different textures and different types of stone on them, based on whether they're on the interior or the exterior. And so that's what we'll do. So that's, I think, a good example of how we're trying to, you know, again, make the units look similar, but yet give them distinct, some distinct characteristics.
And just to follow up, does that also include the single-family homes that are planned or?
Yeah, so the single, so, yeah, so the single-family will set a rule up where they can't use, where they can't have the same, the same floor plan slash same elevation next door to one, it has to be separated by at least one unit and then we won't let them use the same color scheme when it's next door. The single-family is a little more, we can't really pre-plan that because that's more of a build-to-suit product, you know, where the homeowner will come in and tell us, you know, whether he wants an 801, 802, or an 803. Now, we will, you know, restrict the elevation based on, you know, what's next door to them. So we'll help alternate it that way, so you won't see the same house right next door to one, right next door to another one.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, I just want to say, I, I mean, when I was, you mentioned that the color schemes here are similar to the ones in Block 13 and I've been over there and driven around it and walked around it and although the colors are all very muted or neutral, I mean, I actually think it's quite a, it's a more attractive development than I really expected it to be, so I ended up quite liking it.
Any comments, questions?
The only, again, and I am the last one to talk about color, you can ask my wife that. It just seems to me when I look at them, that your word muted is kind of how I look at this and I don't see a lot of variation from unit to unit. And again, I'm the last one, so that's just my two cents, but I am not a decorator, so.
They're all earth tone and they kind of blend together, right?
Well, again, I think that's fair comment, they were all designed to be earth tones colors, because I think if you look at the DRC, they, you know, are requesting earth tone colors in the DRC, so that's where it is.
Will owners have the ability in the future to, I mean, where it's paintable, to change that? I assume there'll be some HOA requirements, but...
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's, yeah, Metro District requirements on that, where they'll have to submit approval.
Yeah, Bill, yeah, maybe you can speak to that, I'm curious if any...
Yeah, the, the Metro District through the CCNR is similar to how an HOA would typically perform, has CCNRs on, on each property. And there is a document of design guidelines managed by the Metro District and a, and a design sort of regulatory authority, authority under the Metro District, which ultimately will be run by residents. Right now, it's run by, you know, by the project basically. But there is a, a pre-selected set of colors that are pre-approved for sort of base face colors and trim colors that you can paint your home any of those pre-approved colors or you can apply to the, to the Design Authority for approval of any other colors that you choose. You know, homeowners here, unlike a condo association, are fee owners of their whole building, so you can choose to paint the outside of your building whenever you want, as long as it's compliant with the HOA or with, I'm sorry, with the Metro District.
Are they all earth tone or their variety of colors?
It is based on the earth tones and that was based on the original PD documents, actually had an approved set of colors, which are based on, you know, largely earth tones and sort of non-offensive colors. Now that said, you can always, as a homeowner, apply to the Design Authority for approval of anything that you want. And to the extent that it's not, you know, something completely not in keeping with the rest of the community, I, I wouldn't see any reason to disimprove it.
Rock Creek HOA loosened up a bit on colors, right, didn't they? I mean, it was all earth tone throughout.
Yeah, oh, now you can, yeah, they've loosened up a lot.
Yeah, yeah, so that could happen over time, I guess, too.
And are these colors an example of what might be there? All of these in this picture?
So this is Remington's product on Block 13. The difference is the stone, but, and you don't see the siding quite as well, but this is the same color scheme for the, where the, where the paint would be applied.
Okay, because it seems like there's a lot more, a lot of difference between the buildings here. It's very easy to see a different color in them, they're not all, they don't seem all earth tone to me. Now, again, maybe they are, but they look different.
And again, I'll, I'll stress that these are the exact same colors that we're using. A couple of things to really point out as far as the colors, and I step away from this just a second. This is kind of similar stone being carried forward, where this was the brick elevation. It's being discontinued, but it's being replaced with different textured stone elevations. So there's also a texture feel on those. So when you walk, when you look out at Block 13, if you look up at the top, when you see the variation of color going across the top, that's not only a color variation, it's also a, a texture variation, where on Block 25, we'll be using lap siding on some and it's a stucco board. So it's a, it's a stucco-looking, it's a stucco board, it, you know, closest resembles stucco to you. So some of these, when you walk out there and look at them, they'll look stucco-oriented, that's the stucco board that we used and we'll be carrying that forward with some of the paint. So that's why when you look at this picture, when you look at this picture, you see a tech, it's a texture and a color difference. And so it's the same, it's the same philosophy for Block 25, we're just doing it with a little bit different material.
Mr. Malia, you have any comments, questions?
You good with the colors? Gentlemen, thank you for the presentation this evening and very nice work with this. It's an extremely challenging site with the, the topography and the way it slopes. I, I understand that very clearly. We all heard the residents and the HOA from Coal Creek Crossing. Before they show up on the evening news, take the high road and do the right thing and do it quickly. You've got to, you know?
My, I think our public comment's kind of closed at this point, so we're kind of in discussions. Thank you.
But for, for this project, knowing the topography of this, the sloping area of the hillside where, what is it, Canary Place comes in there and it, and it combines there, very tricky. The, the orientation of the buildings with their front doors, I'm not, I'm not concerned about that, that they face into interior courtyards at all. It's kind of reminiscent of Rock Creek Circle up behind the Range Rover dealership there, where it's, it's kind of their, their own private community. It kind of makes it more intimate that way, actually. The building heights, I'm not concerned about or nor the floor area allowances. So I would echo Commissioner Stewart's comments and thank you for the presentation and all the work that you've put into this. Looking forward to seeing you come out of the ground.
So I've got some comments, some questions. So my wife is on the Arts Committee and at every project we talk about, you know, is there an opportunity for cultural, for you to work with the Cultural Arts Committee in some of your open areas and would you be willing to do that and, you know, come up with some art projects with the town? Is that something that you're willing to do? Okay. Just trying to get those built into all the projects and just, just, it's going really well, so, thank you. Um, just trying to get those built into all the projects and just, just, it's going really well, so, thank you. I, I, in general, um, can you, can you speak to? I have a different opinion about, um, allowances and going over. Uh, we have design guidelines, we set them. I, I generally stand up and fight for them. Um, but could you speak to, um, why? And why, why you want to, why, why you want this allowance? I'm not worried about the forty square feet and those on the three stories. It's the five hundred square foot difference in, in some of these units. Um, one, why do you want it? Uh, why do we want it? Um, you know, why should we, why should we provide that allowance to you? What, what's the point? Uh, I mean, we have design guidelines where, I mean, it, it makes you go to four stories. It increases the height of the building. You know, whenever we, whenever we get allowances, the building footprint changes. And so my tendency is to really want to see what value it brings us, uh, to do that.
Well, I think that's, uh, I'll try to answer your question, but I think it's a hard question to answer because, you know, when we were in the midst of getting block thirteen approved, like I said, these were the same floor plans that were approved for block thirteen. However, at that point, it wasn't Remington Homes that was getting those approved. It was Davidson Homes. So we took over the, the single-family, uh, product halfway through the FDP process. And I believe, I can't remember exactly, but I think it was already through the Planning Commission at that point. Um, you know, so it's, it's been a product that was approved ahead of time. And frankly, I think, you know, we kind of went with it because of the success that we did have on block thirteen. Um, it's, you know, the, the three-story and the four-story single-family product has been real popular. Um.
But are you, are you, um, yeah, we saw videos of three-story and four-story. Are you gonna build four-story? Is that what you want? Should we even be looking at those three stories or?
Well.
Or will some of them be three-story? What, I mean, we, you know, we're going through the.
There's, I think about eighty percent of our houses on block thirteen are four stories. Eleven out of fourteen, so, are the four-story option. So the four-story, very popular. Um, the third story, not quite as popular, but, uh, the four-story, again, it's a really expensive option. And so I think it, uh, pushes the price of the house up. And I said, I don't know that it's for everybody. What's included on the four-story really ends up being, so when you start talking about the square footage of the four-story really ballooning the house and making it a larger house, what, what, what adds on the four-story is a stairwell that's in the, that goes to the, to the roof deck, which is part of the square footage ad. Then you get, um, one room up there with a, with a bathroom. So it's kind of a, I call it kind of, it's, these houses do not have a basement in them. So I kind of say that the four-story probably ends up being used as the rec room. And then you have on the exterior of the unit is, is a deck.
So. And it's an option. Will you end up with three-story and four-stories? I mean, how, how will that shake out? I mean, if you're selling these units, I mean, is there a lot of units that'll all be four-story or will they?
Well, again, what we.
Will there be three and four stories next to each other?
Well, what we had, yeah, so, so what we've done on block thirteen is it's, it's an option whether the homeowner. So these are all build-to-suit. And so the four-story is an option that the homeowner elects to take, much like a basement finisher.
Any, any unit could be three or four?
Yeah, so they, so any one could be a three or story. So, but again, what I've committed to is if we sell a four-story elevation A, that's an eight oh one plan, I won't put a four-story elevate, uh, eight oh one next to it.
Okay.
Because that would be an identical plan. Now, they could potentially go to another eight oh two or an eight oh three four-story with a different elevation. Um, so, you know, is there a potential that you get a lot of four-stories? Yes. Now, what I will tell you, we have gone back and redesigned the eight oh three plan because we got some comments that that wasn't the best floor plan that we had out there. And then so that four-story plan looks quite a bit different than the four-story, than the eight oh one and eight oh two four-story. Stephen, I don't know if you have that, the elevations there, but. So, yeah, the square footage.
That's your eight oh three? Is that the one you wanted?
Yeah, so the eight oh, is this, yeah, so this is the eight oh three. And so if you look at this, this fourth-story elevation here, the rooftop deck actually sticks out to the front. Where everything on block thirteen, the rooftop deck looked out the back. So we really have substantially changed. So this is the four-story plan for the eight oh two, where the deck is out the back. You know, where that fat roof, I don't know how many of you guys have been in our, you know, that product or our models and saw it. So we've substantially changed the way that looks. We get, uh, a lot of positive feedback that the four-story is nice on these. And so, you know, I think we would like to continue doing it. Um, you know, and again, I'd like to emphasize that it is within the guidelines with the exception of the square footage. And I think the other side to go with the square footage that we've been a little sensitive of is, you know, we could meet the square footage criteria pretty easily by eliminating the square footage on the main level. You know, but we've found that people like the study or something down there, you know? And so, you know, eliminating, we could, we could get these houses within the square footage criteria if that was an absolutely must on this.
Okay, thank you.
To, to quickly speak to one of the other benefits from a master developer and a town fiscal standpoint, the, the larger houses obviously result in a more valuable house that costs more to buy and, and has a higher tax assessment without increasing any density, which ultimately a higher tax assessment and higher tax income without increasing any density or population is good for the general fund and good for the Metro District from a maintenance standpoint. So that's just something to think about. From a PD and a zoning standpoint, the PD here amounts to really a form-based code, which those are intended to, to limit projects by height and by setback. Um, you know, to me, those, those sort of prototype, uh, you know, the, the building, um, examples that we have in the design guidelines and on that sheet in the PD were meant to be examples of what could be developed on these sites and what is a typical development. Um, to me, to have these homes, you know, go four hundred or five hundred square feet over that is, is not. Um, I, I understand from a black and white standpoint, it is an exception to that page in the PD. But to me, it's not an exception to the intent of the PD, so I would encourage allowing this. Um, and the, the third thing is just, um, judging by the, uh, popularity of both the Wonderland four-story townhomes and like Steve said, eighty percent, this is not a Remington choice to build a four-story home or a three-story home. They just offer it as an option. The buyers come and choose what they want. And the fact that eighty percent of buyers have chosen to pay an extra. How much? An extra too much. To, to have this fourth-story option with this roof deck i- is just a testament to how, um, popular it is in, in the marketplace and for buyers coming into downtown Superior. And for me, if we can provide something that, that buyers and residents want, we, we should be doing that, so.
Okay, thank you. Um, and the last thing here is just a little nitpick in your wording in the narrative. Um, so on, on page ten of the, the narrative that we received, you, uh, just you indicate that, um, people can enjoy sitting, sitting down and they can watch their dogs and children's play on the grass. And their dogs aren't gonna be playing on the grass, they're gonna be on a leash. So just setting that precedent is, you know, it's, it's, like I said, it's a little nitpicky, but, um, you know, don't, don't set that precedent that those dogs can be running around off-leash out there, right? So. Some, somebody's gonna latch on to that, that phrase right there in that narrative. And, and I think you have a dog park out there in the middle of your, your, uh, your area, so. Or build a dog park that people can be off-leash and that would probably be worth talking about, too, so. Um. Let's see. I think that's all I have for them. So Stephen, you had a couple of, let's see, so do you, can we talk more about the overhangs? How they impact utilities? Is that just, is that just some? Can you just talk a little bit about that and what we need to do to make sure that's accommodated in our recommendations?
Oh, it's accommodated. It's just, I mean, that's why there are these additional details on the plans. So, um, I just wanted to clarify with Plan Commission and the Board that, you know, zero setbacks are, are proposed. Uh, typically, the, the primary wall, uh, is, is not setback at zero feet. Zero feet is, is allowed or, uh, proposed in order to allow for the overhangs. So it's not a lot of setback, you know? I encourage them to have more, but, uh, but we have what we need and, and all of these additional details are in order to confirm that those, those building footprints sit on those lots and allow for building articulation without creating an issue where you're encroaching over a property line.
Okay, and you think those are met just?
Oh, they're met. We've spent a lot of time, spent a lot of time on it.
Okay. Um, and I don't have a major issue with the, the, the front doors facing the courtyard. I know some trustees probably will. That'll be a discussion that I'm sure will come up. I think there's just mixed opinion as to what people think about that layout and that design. Some people like it, some people don't, so I'm, I don't, I'm not generally opposed to it.
Well, I also, if we've already approved it. Well, in other areas, yeah. I have a hard time.
And we have it elsewhere in town, too.
Yeah, and it's not like we're doing everything that way, so, um, yeah, I'm, I'm with you. I don't, I agree.
And after seeing the three-D, the, the transitions, they look like they're nicely done. I mean, the, I mean, the in-between the, the buildings looks decent. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that. Does anybody else have any concerns over the transition coming down that, that?
No, there'll, there'll be a lot of rotating walls and landscaping put in there. I mean, that'll be a lot of landscaping work, but that's the Metro District.
Yep. Mr. James? So that's you guys that do all the landscaping? So, so you'll do all that?
Yeah, I don't have any issue with that either. Um, I'm happy that there's a way to connect, um, Discovery Parkway down to the town center. Um, that's something that we've been talking about, you know, a lot. And to see that happen, um, is, is, uh, a bonus.
Is there other connectivity from Discovery, that Discovery Development? That's not ADA, any other steps or any other pathways down into town?
Set of stairs here.
There's stairs there, okay.
And then drops you to another set of stairs. This is the most direct connection.
Okay.
And then there's another connection through this outlot off of, uh, Discovery Parkway that goes straight across. So we've, I mean, that's the other thing that this project has done to coordinate as much as possible. So outlots are already established on, um, block twenty-five for the Wonderland Homes. We've done our best to align those outlots with what it's gonna be in the interior and then create the connections where they're possible. So stairs are required, you know, in the central area. We didn't connect every outlot because stairs are expensive. But there are connections through the other outlots, um, as much as possible. And there's actually just as many connections on block twenty-five as there are, I believe, on, on block thirteen. Um, I think there's more opportunity, there's a little bit more length in this curve here. But, uh, we've done it. Um, I think it's a fairly porous site to allow for the pedestrian connectivity in and out, so.
Okay.
And it's a porous site, particularly given the, the constraints of the, uh, the topography out there.
Okay. Um, any more questions for staff or the applicant guy?
I, I just have some history questions because I'm sort of relatively new to this. Um, do you, do you know why block thirteen and block, block, sorry?
Hey David, could you get a little closer to your mic or bring it down to your mouth just so we can get it on? Thank you.
Why are blocks fifteen and twenty-six, uh, why do they have a thirty-two-foot height limit? Whereas block fourteen has a fifty-five-foot height limit?
So that's just what was established and a lot of it is driven by the, the vision corridor that exists, um, along the southern boundary or the northern boundary, I guess.
If you have a, I mean, the question I'm going to is if you have a thirty-two-foot height limit on that, does it make sense to put a fifty-foot-high building on block twenty?
That's what I wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of.
Block twenty-five.
If you think about the, the Thrive proposal, Thrive, you know, attempted to have, you know, a transition area on block twenty-six and on block fourteen, where they would have a little bit taller buildings immediately adjacent to what's gonna be or potentially be fifty-five feet on block twenty-five. They were told, no, that this needed to stick at, at thirty-two. So whether or not you can go or whether or not we want to have thirty-two feet jump to fifty-five feet on the other side of the street in these two locations is something I think is, is worth considering because it is an extreme change in, in height. So if that transition didn't occur on block fourteen and block twenty-six, do we want it to occur on block twenty-five? Um, and that, there's an opportunity for that because of the, the floor area requirement. They are meeting the height requirement there and entirely allowed to have fifty-five feet here. But that floor area allowance is a, I, I think is a massing issue as well.
Yep.
Uh, and limitation. And so that is, there's, there's an opportunity there to have more of a transition, uh, on this edge, which puts thirty-two-foot height limits.
But couldn't they, couldn't they keep the, I mean, to their point, they could make the square footage still fit by, and stay, and keep the height?
That's what's proposed.
Right, but I mean, but they could come back and say, well, we'll, we'll meet what you want by doing.
But what you'd also have is a, a thinner product that doesn't, isn't as wide and doesn't go three feet to property line. Because they're gonna reduce their, their floor area.
Actually, it would just be a larger garage on the ground floor.
Yeah, they're, yeah, he said, just make that first floor larger.
I'd have to look into that because I'm not entirely sure the garage necessarily gets accepted from the floor area allowance.
Yeah.
Pretty sure it's the living area and we can, we can.
My, my other concern about it from the, from the three-D modeling is that, uh, the shadow, the shade that the high buildings cast onto the interior courtyard.
That whole town is, that whole downtown's dealing with that. I mean, you look at, yeah.
Thirty-eight, I think, I think it runs from forty-three to eighty. Uh, so there's about forty odd townhomes facing into that courtyard. So, uh, how attractive it is is going to depend a lot on how much light there is.
Just to make sure we're all clear, all of the townhouses that face the courtyard are either a three-story or a two-story product that are inside of the.
Oh, yes, no, I understand that.
Okay, the, yeah, the four-story single-family.
Yes.
Are across the alley and up on Discovery and.
And I, I noticed on block thirteen that all the four-story buildings are around the perimeter and all the interior buildings are actually three stories. And, uh, it's just that, uh, Outlet L, which is the landscaped area, seemed pretty narrow. And if you've got tall buildings on each side of it, I'm not quite, I mean, you could see the shade that was cast by, uh, those buildings as they, uh, as you ran through the seasons on the three-D, uh, on the three-D modeling, which, I mean, I mean, when these standards were set up, were people more concerned about the fifty-five-foot height limit or more concerned about the size of the buildings?
I can't actually speak to, I mean, those standards predate me.
Yeah, I think there were view, view corridor discussions. And I mean, we did hold Thrive to their height limit. And, and I, and thank you for pointing that out because I, that sort of escaped me a little bit. Um. And part of this might be just asking the developer, too, to reconsider that edge, too, right across the street from those, from, from that. But I mean, at some point, I mean, there's a line somewhere, right? It's just a matter of where the line gets drawn, right?
There's a line somewhere.
Yeah, so wherever, wherever we do it, whether it's there or one block over, you know? It's, it's, it's there. Um, one thing we didn't see that, and he's gone already, but was just the view from, uh, uh, the, from, from Rock Creek and just coming back and looking at it from that angle, that additional story that's there, which is, I mean, one of the worries about that, that whole edge was just to keep that view corridor a little softer, right?
Right.
To quickly answer the question on, on history, so that, I think that the biggest intent of the height differential between block twenty-five and then the southern block twenty-six and fifteen partly was, was in response to that, uh, view shade corridor, which actually is much higher than the, the height limits here. Um, really, it was more of an attempt to, uh, achieve this gradient density, or density gradient from the town core down into the high-density residential, block twenty-five and thirteen, down into a lower-density residential, block twenty-six, down against Rock Creek. Um, which is, you know, why that, that thirty-two-foot high limit is on those southern blocks that border the buffer area in Rock Creek. And then as, as you get north towards the town center, it jumps up to fifty-five feet. Um, two things to think about from a design standpoint is that block twenty-six.
Right here?
Yeah. Uh, as I think you've probably seen on the Thrive proposal, there's a fair amount of grade between block twenty-six where the homes are and the street of Discovery. There's like a six to ten-foot, um, grade differential that the homes are actually up above the street. And there's these grand stairways that come up to the homes. So those thirty-two-foot tall homes from the street level are actually like forty-two-foot tall compared to the fifty-five-foot to the north. Um, from a design standpoint, the other nice thing about this is that, that block twenty-five faces south. So the, the taller homes on block twenty-five aren't shading the, the, the lower homes to the south or the streets at all. They're really just shading the interior alleys, which to us, you know, we'll have snow removal on the alleys and, and it's not a really pedestrian or kind of public green space that you'd be worried about shading. Um, on those outlots that connect the, the block, like you see on block twenty-five, whether those homes were three stories or four stories, because of the density of the, the development, that they're gonna be in shade. And that's just part of kind of the urban character. And it's, uh, one of the unfortunate results of having tall, dense. And it's, uh, one of the unfortunate results of having tall density.
Any more questions before we go into discussion? I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and we can talk this through and make a decision. Last call. All right, public hearing is closed. So thoughts on the block twenty-five to transition in? And I'm generally okay. I think that line's going to go, that line's going to sit somewhere.
Yeah, I, I, I'll, I'll, I think I'm okay because I, I don't like to do things just to push someone to make it work and they could still stay within the fifty-five because someone set that. We set that.
Yeah, that was set when the guidelines were done.
With some people smarter maybe than, than us or maybe not, but, um, but they set that guideline and to make them reduce the footprint just, you know, in, in a square footage, because that's what they're out of, that just.
Or make the garage bigger.
It seems, you know, substance over form, it just doesn't seem.
Yeah.
I don't think that makes any sense, so, so I'm okay with it too. I don't think it makes sense. I think it probably shouldn't have ever been fifty-five, maybe. That seems like a big transition when you did it, but we did it and we live with it, so.
Anyone else, anything else?
Um, I am, I'm generally supportive of this. I like the plan. I like the product. I think that, um, when we look at the exceptions that they're asking for, they're not, um, out of range. I, I think that it's in, in my mind acceptable. I, uh, um, don't have an issue with where that, um, the height limitations are in, in this case. I think that, um, they're fine with where they are and I do, um, appreciate, um, the, um, additional information about the houses that are, you know, going to be set at thirty-five feet, actually being forty-two feet above. So there's going to be some, um, some natural transition there. And based on the way that there's this, um, this, the topography is, um, we're going to get that natural, um, transition anyway. So I, um, would, uh, recommend moving forward and approving, um, this plan.
David, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay. Uh, the only, so the two things I'd like to maybe consider, one, they've, they've offered to work with our cultural arts committee. I don't think we have to make that a condition of the resolution, but I'd like to add that into the recommendations to the board when we pass this forward that, that they've agreed that they'd work with cultural arts to just come up with some art elements for, for this development and, um, I do want to address or at least bring from, from this meeting to the board, the, the, just the, the volume of public comment we had and the concerns that, that they're, that they're dealing with. Again, I don't think it's a condition of the approval of this. I think that's a little bit outside of, of this, especially since the landscaping is actually handled by, by, yeah, by, by R.C. Superior and not by Remington Homes. But I'm going to echo what was said, that this need, it needs to be resolved and it's, it's sort of impacting it. It's, it, I don't know whether you'll come forward with other proposals in the town, but it's going to, you know, it just keeps coming up and, and it, it just needs to be addressed. And so if we could include in our report or recommendation to the board that, that they make a point to, uh, I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure they'll get this read to them as well, but, um, that they're just made aware of, of where things stand with, with Remington and Coal Creek Crossing, um, and that they continue to work to get that resolved. Um, and let's just keep it in the forefront, so. Can we just work that, we can work that into our?
I could just clarify in my staff memo that that's what the public comment was about.
Okay, that would be, that would be awesome. Okay. Okay, so, let's see, so we do have, you have the resolution for any there?
I do. I'd just say that I, I support your recommendations there to put the cultural arts committee and the, uh, the voices of the Coal Creek Crossing HOA. So if you could handle that, Stephen, that'd be great.
Yep, and you, could we just add, could we add the, the arts commitment into the resolution? Or is that a reasonable thing to do?
Yeah, I, I think it's probably more appropriate for it to be included in the, um, the report itself.
Okay.
Rather than, uh, as a condition in the resolution.
Yeah, in the resolution, that's fair. Okay, all right. You want to take a stab at this?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that the Town of Superior Planning Commission, Resolution Number Eleven, Series Two Thousand Eighteen, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the Town of Superior recommending approval of a major final subdivision plat and final development plan for Superior Lot A.
Super lot, sorry.
I'm sorry, Super Lot A and Outlet G, Block Twenty-Five, Superior Town Center, Case Number FP dash Two Thousand Eighteen dash zero eight and FP dash Two Thousand Eighteen dash zero five.
And do we need to articulate the conditions that are listed or just as is?
As you can, you can just.
As written.
As, as drafted.
Okay, as drafted, okay. All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Malia on the table. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Stewart, all in favor? Opposed? Nobody? It passed unanimously? All right, thank you all. All right, where's my agenda? Lights. Going to bring up our work plan from this year?
Where it is?
Oh, boy.
Commissioner Harper, tell where you're done.
So you, you gotta turn, you gotta turn the sheet over. And gentlemen, we, um, gentlemen, we need to continue our meeting, so if they could, yeah, thank you, no worries. Thanks.
See you guys.
All right.
So just to clarify, um, it doesn't have to be adopted tonight, but we, we do need to do something soon. So if it, if, and you don't have a full, uh, commission tonight, so, um, however you want to handle it, but we do, we do need to shoot for getting something adopted for your work plan by our first meeting in, um, anywhere.
We can just maybe breeze through this and see if we have adjustments and changes. I, you know, that, that first one, I think, sort of sits there. I mean, I'm, I'm, I continue to hear from town board that, that, that there's a desire for the planning commission to just take a stronger role in some of these things. I'd like to get some clarification of what we can and can't do. I mean, we took the opportunity to send a plan back, um, that we didn't like. I mean, it gave us a, just a, an opportunity to, um, just create a better plan that came forward to the town board. And I think there's, there could be better ways to do that than, you know, just continuing the public hearing. I, I don't know if you were here for that, that, that.
Which one was that?
No, what was the one we sent back and then we had them come back? The, the.
Or the signage on that.
Yeah, the signage, right, so.
The signage on the garage.
But didn't the town, but didn't the town board have then approved? When we said do this, didn't the town board?
They, no, they, they approved what they came back with. I mean, we wanted some additional changes from what they came back, but they revised it. It reduced the signs by twenty percent. It got them turned off at, at the hours. I mean, that was accomplished because we said, come back with something else and they did. And then we had a couple of other things we wanted done, but.
They didn't do those.
They didn't do those, but, but we forced it to go and come back and, and we reduced things by about twenty percent. And I think that's.
Actually, it was a very, I mean, I think what we ended up with was much better than what we started with.
Yeah. So just building on that, you know, let us, let, let us push these guys a bit here and there when the, when this stuff comes forward and let's get what we think is right. Because people are going to come forward with the maximum that they want to do in all cases and more, right?
Well, that was like the, uh, let's have four stories and go up forty feet.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't seen a plan yet that hasn't had a, a variant, uh, hasn't had a request for, for, for a change, right? So, um, so I'd, yeah, I'd love to leave that on there.
I agree with that. Number one should stay.
Yeah.
Number two?
Yeah, why should we get rid of number one? I mean, it's been there for at least the last five years, so.
I take it off now. Well, I think there is, um, there, there is some renewed interest at the board level to, to do this. Um, I'm having some conversations with board members about it and.
Well, I, I think, uh, I mean, it ought to be assistance to the board, I mean.
Well, yeah, we should be, yeah, exactly.
I thought that was a big enough stack of papers for us. And I mean, it's about a quarter of what they get for their meetings.
Yes, yeah. So, and, and maybe that's a little bit, you know, maybe we could, maybe we could rephrase that a little bit to, um, you know, work, to, to, uh, work with a town board to, to see how the planning commission can better assist, uh, in, in proposals before they come forward to the board.
That's a better, I like that. Yeah, what, what can we focus on?
Yeah.
In the projects, especially if it's going to be as busy as Stephen, as they kind of said. Yeah, what do they want us to look at? What, what's important to them?
You know, I mean, yeah, how can we help their process go a little bit?
I think there's some merit in discussing that a little more extensively because in that, in those fifty-eight pages of the final development plan, I mean, there's, many of those pages were things like utilities, signage. I mean, yes, I looked at them. If, if you ask me if I could tell you anything about the utilities, that's a result. The answer is, I mean, what, what, what should we, I mean, I was trying to focus on what should we really be looking for? Yes, I mean, where do we as a commission add value that's not adding technically by the stuff? And I think it's, it's probably in the colors, you know, do we reflect the community? It's in, it's, it's the things that affect the quality of life in those buildings.
Yeah.
Like the landscaping, you know, it's the landscaping.
And the sunlight.
Yeah.
Is there going to be any sunlight in there? Or, I mean, I asked Steve a question, you know, is, is there really enough space to store snow when it snows? I mean, none of those particular.
Well, that, I mean, that brings up, I mean, the checklist and, and that came from, from trustee Skodinsky, you know, this idea of a more structured checklist. But I, 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 I hear you that, I mean, if it's going to be a thousand lines long, you know, that's, that's going to be hard. But if we, if we, I mean, if there are, if there are things that we very specifically want to understand and care about and we want to know, yes, that's checked off and it meets it and, and you, you know, it, it's in the narrative. But it's, you know, checklists are nice, right? If we don't need to think about it, worry about landscaping. But if we see something that's, you know, it could be staff concern like this one, it was, it was well within their rights to go fifty-five feet, but that transition from Thrive, I mean, you know, those are, those are good to, 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 to stand out in more of a list format because reading through the narrative and finding all those is challenging.
I mean, when, when they went to fifty-five feet over in block thirteen, there were a lot of people who lived up on the hill.
Yeah.
Who really complained about that.
Yeah.
Having gone to fifty-five feet over there, it wasn't even much point stepping it down over here, but.
Right. Um, so maybe, you know, just visit the, just have a discussion around the, the, um, how would we word it? The, the, just the, the presentation of the, the staff presentation and, and whether a checklist of sorts might be helpful for us. Maybe that can fall, I don't know if that falls as one A or something like that, but, um.
The areas, I would say like areas of focus that the town board wants the planning commission.
Right, and, or what we want, you know.
Or what we want.
Or what staff wants to tell us.
This one is them, right? This is us, us, what do they want, right?
Yeah, I'd say, yeah, continue to, to, um, yeah, let Stephen.
I would say more about continuing to develop a process with the town board rather than just a relationship with them.
How we, how we can better help the, the, the process of the town bed, yeah.
How do you want that written?
Oh, um.
We can actually increase the size of this too, so we're not also like.
Yeah, there we go. Um, I mean, one of it could, could be as simple as work with the town board to find out how we can help them better.
I'd say, how about continue to develop review process with town board?
Sure.
That's really what we're talking about, isn't it?
Maybe it's an alignment, maybe how do we align better with the board and their process?
Yeah, well, yeah, it just boils down to, yeah, how, how can we, yeah, I mean, and there's some things in here that concern me and, and some of them are legal and, and I don't, you know, I mean, I'm still hearing that they're not allowed to, to listen to our planning commission meetings after the meeting and that baffles the heck out of me.
The board card?
Right, yeah, that's what I've heard from a couple, a couple. I've actually had two of the new trustees been said they were told that if it's a, with a, with a public hearing, that they're not allowed to listen to the planning commission meetings. And that just baffles me. I've had others say it's not, so there's still confusion in that area.
Don't they attend every now and then?
Uh, I've never seen one of you. I, I haven't seen a board member here.
Dan, how does that work?
I know some of them watch it. They watch it on the live.
Why are they, why, why is the town board of trustees restricted from hearing our meetings?
I mean, you know, that was likely something that Kendra had pointed out to them. I mean, I guess the idea being that there's no, um, you want to avoid any type of predetermination before they're able to, to see it themselves, um, is likely the, the reason.
It seems insane to me. I mean, it does, it just seems not, I don't get it.
The back it with Stephen's notes.
Right, so the idea being that the, the public hearing commences and then they take in the evidence as it's presented during the public hearing.
Okay.
Right? But we're in a public hearing.
Right, well, well, during the, the board of trustees.
No, I know, but this is a public, I mean, that evidence is going on in a public hearing. It, it just seems crazy to me, but, and so I'd, I mean, I.
Yeah, and I can certainly, you know.
We can, we can put those underneath here.
I mean, I, I'd say sorting that out would be a very high priority.
Yeah, or maybe the supple it is, is, uh, understand what communication can happen between town board and planning commission.
And that's something that we can, you know, provide to, to.
Yeah, because they're, they're getting mixed. I mean, I know some people are watching. I've, I've heard two new trustees, they were just flat out told that, yeah, no, you're not allowed to do that, so.
It was just the new chairman and stuff.
Or something, I, yeah, I don't, yeah, I'm not, I don't know who's telling who what. I'm, it's just something I heard, so.
There is this issue about, I mean, it was always coming up in Boulder about whether two trustees, two of that city council could meet, you know, they're not allowed to meet and discuss things outside council meeting. I don't, I don't really know exactly how to define it, but there's limitations on who can talk to who, when.
Well, when, yeah, yeah.
In the public arena.
Yeah, so if there's an, if there's an application in place, there are definitely rules that, and then it's not even that you can't talk, you just have to report that. I mean, if you do and that happens, you have to report that that conversation happened as, as the way I understand it, but.
Yeah, the idea being that there's a certain, um, if there's a certain amount of people that are on the planning commission that, um, sit down and discuss something, it constitutes a, a public meeting. I believe it's three.
Yeah, right. But I mean, if you, but, but also talking to, and I mean, if an applicant comes up and talks to you and starts asking you questions and.
Yeah.
You sit there and listen, I mean.
Yeah.
You don't have to say anything, but you should probably, you know, in the meeting, you should report that that conversation happened and.
Yeah.
And just so it's clear.
And the idea being again, that you don't want to make a predetermination or, or, or bias or anything along those lines.
Right, right, right.
It needs to be an open, public hearing.
That's related to the trustees not being able to hear what we've said or discussed.
You're agreed, yeah. And they, but they can review the minutes, which is odd. So anyway, there, there is, that's, that falls under here, I think, as well.
So I, I have mixed feelings about working to develop a review checklist. Um, on the one hand, I think it really gives us something really concrete to focus on when we're meeting and when we're hearing these applicants. Uh, on the other hand, I think it takes away some of our ability to use our own judgment and it kind of micromanages us in, in some way, which, um, I don't know that I necessarily like that.
Could we change it to consider, uh, just, can we consider it rather than work to do it? Could we, could we have further discussion about it?
And just not that, maybe develop some way, um, to, um, allow the town board to review the work that we've done.
Well, that's not for the town board. In my mind, this is for us, right? So what, what I was thinking was just, um.
Well, it's a bullet.
A more, a more, a more clear way for us to know what's been met and what hasn't been met, you know, within design guidelines. And this is focused heavily on downtown Superior, right? So.
Right.
You know, if there's, if there's twenty things on there that I can look at and say, twenty-two of these are checked off, they're green, they're good, there's no problem. Here's three that are red.
In, in my, in my mind, that's all in our comprehensive plan and we look at that. And those are the things that we use to determine whether or not we move forward with an applicant or not. If those, um, items in our comprehensive plan are meant, are, are met and they, um, the applicant has met those, then I, you know, we move forward without having a checklist that is then sent.
Well, we're, we're responsible for reviewing like this application against the design guidelines, right? And there are a boatload of design guidelines and, and Stephen's been great about, you know, pulling out some of these. But we sit here and we keep asking the questions over, what was that again that you, you know, that you're concerned about, right? So the idea was if I can know clearly ahead of time that what that concern is and that's on the list, then I can go dig into that and be better prepared for in the meeting. Those, and maybe we don't work to develop it. Could we, could we change that to consider the development of a, of a, of a checklist with, you know, I mean, it doesn't mean you have to go work on it, but just consider it. And if we agree that we want to do it, then.
If you have a checklist, checklist is just a sort of basic thing. If you have a checklist, checklist is just a sort of basic thing you have to do. If you wanna go beyond it, explore.
Right, you're gonna have to dig in, yeah. Not suggesting the narrative goes away, no, I mean.
I'm not suggesting, I'm not, I mean, I don't think it should be a limiting, you know?
No, I think it should be an additional tool.
Limiting tool.
Yeah, and the thing is, the, the good thing about having a commission like this is that you have individuals that can then make their own determinations about what's important to them in any particular application. So what might be important to you, I might, you know, see something different, you know, and.
Yeah, I mean, I might always wanna dig into, you know, open space requirements or trails, or, and you might wanna always dig into
ADA.
ADA and accessibility and movement and, you know, I mean, then we've, we've identified that before. And if we massage this into, that's real easy for you, right? So ADA requirements have been met, or, oh, by the way, there's a couple of questions, so that Anthony can go dig deeper and talk about it at the next meeting, right? That's, that was sort of the idea behind this. I don't wanna create anything onerous for staff either, that's the other.
It's like having, it's like identifying height variances and things like that.
Right.
Doesn't mean that we don't accept, it just says we've identified them, this is outside the norm, this is one thing we're gonna look at. It's not meeting it, what do we think about it? Like we did tonight on square footage.
And, and I would want, I mean, and I'd want the applicant to, I mean, to know that as well. I mean, if there's three in the yellow or red column, I expect you to tell me why you have two or three things. I don't wanna just sit here and discuss whether we like it or not. I'd like to have an expectation that if it's outside of the design guidelines, I expect you to get up to the podium and tell us why you're doing it, why we care, and why we should do it. And not just sit here and say, eh, I'm okay with it.
And I think Stephen does a pretty good job of that at the beginning of the meeting.
Right, yes, 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 yeah.
You do a good job of identifying.
And that's exactly why we need that individuality.
Yeah.
You know, to be able to do that.
So I, I understand that my staff reports are long. I wanna get some context in the sense that, uh, they're not just, just for you, they're not just for the board. They also serve as a record of, of review approval.
Yeah, I would not wanna see those changed at all.
So I, I, I strove to, to provide a more, like, executive summary in this one. I don't know if it was apparent or not. But it actually led to a longer staff report than it would've to begin with. But, I mean, it is, I mean, the, the example I guess I can cite is that, you know, I could go through and, you know, touch on every design guideline criteria. We could, we could go into every detail about how the landscape, you know, like what species is.
No, yeah.
I mean, that's where we kinda draw the line. So there is this, you know, judgment call as to what level, you know, of exception we wanna actually bring up front of you and, and have, have a, you know, draw your attention to versus.
That's what I think, it could just.
I mean, one species versus, versus.
Yeah, and I don't think we care about those. I mean, I think starting at a very high level, you know, similar to what you're doing here. And if we want more detail, well, that'll, that'll shake out over time, you know, I mean, if we start seeing things.
What you're also saying is like, i- if you just had a, you know, like a, a list, you know, like Excel spreadsheet, just talk about what the, you know, setback, you know, what's proposed, what's required.
Oh, yeah, these tables in here, this, this was awesome, and they were highlighted, that was, yeah, and I love those, because those are quick and they're easy to see what's going on, and then you can figure out whether you need to dig in any deeper to them or not, yeah.
You know, I mean, and even if it's just, uh, like something that you are always able to cite, you know, like, and it's not always gonna be the same thing, but, you know, like, I don't know, building orientation or, or some of the design criteria about like what the color palette actually is, you know, that's outlined within the design criteria. You know, we might be able to, because that's a, that's the other issue, is we have a standard, but it's also a hundred and sixty-something pages, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah. One of the applicant could work on, you know, could do most of the work, and then, and then you, yeah.
We require them to, I mean, we require them to identify when they're making an exception, and I've been very, you know, direct with them that, you know, if, if something is, falls outside of that criteria that wasn't specifically asked for, it's not considered granted. So you need to be explicit with your request, and it's, the onus is on you to tell us about it and justify it. I will just tee it up for you to consider and give you like some context like I did tonight, so.
So I, yeah, just another, a little more conversation around it. I mean, if we wanna kill it, we can kill it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm open to having conversation about that, but it's just, it, you know, how much do we really wanna numb things down? You know, is the question, and I think, for, for me, checklists do that, they numb things down.
The advantage of having, I mean, why I like checklists is that, I mean, I like to put the important things on them.
Right.
Just to make sure, I mean, as I say, what, I, I, I'm really not going to go through those utility drawings very, very.
Well, I mean, if we come up with a checklist that we require the applicant to fill out as part of the application procedures, and then then tell us what they've, you know, what they've meant or something, then maybe that, you know, and then it's something that just kinda gets given.
Well, and it focuses the discussion then on the important stuff, and the other stuff that's already meets it, you kind of pass by it, hopefully.
Right.
It shortens and emphasizes on the things we should be talking.
Well, and it gives you a, a reference, too. So you fall back and like, well, what did they say the setbacks were? You don't have to find, you know, page thirty-three or whatever, you know.
I mean, there, there are things that we can offer a sort of more, I'd say a more valuable opinion on, like, do we think the color schemes are good? Do we, do we care about the shapes of the roof?
And it's gonna get more and more important that we, I mean, that's what was tricky about this one, is that there was also this element of the context. Because like previously, block thirteen, there was no development context to, to, you know, address with it. And this one's fitting in between the Discovery Office Park and block thirteen, which are already developed, and knowing, you know, what the color schemes were, what the product types and what those heights are and all that stuff is all relevant now. So like, that detail just becomes more, and it just leads to more information.
Well, and we don't miss the, because then like having that on the checklist, if that wasn't on, we relied on you to tell us, hey, there's this transition between the buildings, if that was part of the checklist of how did this transition to other developments? How does this compare to other things they've done in the past?
I mean, what's adjacent to the north side?
And, and.
I thought yours, I thought your sections, you know, the A and B sections, which showed what the, what it was actually gonna look like, was actually very helpful, because you can't, I mean, I actually drove over there, drove around Discovery Parkway so I could look at the site. I mean, you can't tell just by looking at that empty site what it's gonna look like when there are houses on it.
And so, yeah, in the spirit of not having that conversation now, why don't we, so if we end this good, we'll leave that on a list, and, yeah, we can talk about all those things later. So then, review, you know, this review and comment or recommend approval on development, I mean, that's our job. Does that, does that just sit on the work plan, or does it even need to be on the work plan? I mean, that, that is what our.
I didn't have time to review past work plans beyond this one, so I don't know how long that one's been on.
Yeah, oh, no, I don't know, and I mean.
It's probably just, you know.
That's what we do.
I mean, I knew it's my primary role.
I think that might've been something that was directly from the board if you.
Might've been, that could be, all right. And I think number three still remains there. I mean, we do wanna be involved in capital improvement projects, right?
Do those actually, I mean, those come to us?
Yeah, we've got, I mean, so typically the, the distinction there is that for anything within the town center or downtown Superior now, that's a capital improvement project, it's essentially an FDP, so you see.
We see those anyway, but we've made requests.
Something outside of that, it would be a, a, you know, an infrastructure project or something that Alex brings to you.
Yeah, and it would be mostly informative more than it would, informative and comment more than it is approval, right? I mean, we're not.
You'd still be, you know, commenting on whether or not, like, because there's like some landscaping that are associated with the street, and whether or not you wanna roundabout this location, and I don't know why.
Or having to speak to the cultural arts committee.
Right, exactly, exactly. I think land use code cleanup, so that's probably fine, we continue to do that, yes.
One of the things that still surprises me is this build-by-right stuff.
Surprises you or confounds you, which, what, what do you mean?
I suppose I think that's inappropriate.
Well, we will have an opportunity, so I would say that that falls underneath, that falls under the northwest area plan. And I think we'll have opportunity to discuss that and address it, and, you know, I, I don't know how or what we can do, but.
I don't know whether it's a planning commission issue or it's obviously a trustee issue.
Well, I think it's a planning issue, I mean.
Because, I, I mean, I, I don't think Boulder Creek neighborhoods ought to be able to put that development down in Rogers Farm that we were looking at last night just by right.
Well, and you have to, yeah, and that's, that's what's in our code, and those are, those are, those, again, these are lines, right, that are drawn, right? So if you own a lot, are you allowed to come in there and build a house?
Well, it's the same thing as those, those sort of plate.
But, but right, you wanna walk in, you wanna come down here, get your permit, build your house, it's owned, single family. They just happen to have fifty-two of them, right, that are zoned and planted and ready to go, and.
For one house, it might be appropriate, for fifty-two houses.
Right, so that's, that's what I mean, yeah, so that line is, is, I don't know what, yeah. So I think that falls under the northwest area plan, and, because this is the only area that we can do that everything else in towns under a PD. Everything else, or, or would fall under a PD. This, it's just original, the original town's the only thing that even applies to our land use code anywhere. You know what I mean? P, everything else falls under a PD, yeah, yeah. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
That's right, so.
We have a much smaller area than most.
Yeah, exactly, we don't have, yeah, but, but we have it, and it has to be dealt with, right? Yeah, so. Let's see, so is northwest Superior's is sort of bulleted under, should that just be a line item? Is that just a?
I think it's called the sub, it's called the sub-area, not the small area.
This is what it was to begin with?
Yeah, at the beginning of the year, that's what it was. It, it's, it's morphed in, in its, in its name, but yes, we could correct, we can, he, have him correct the, uh.
I'm not sure it's, I'd just call it current.
Yeah.
It even became area plan.
Northwest Superior Area Plan, yeah, something like that, but you can.
Sub-area plan.
Is that what Darcy calls it?
On the last, uh. Last, uh.
And is that a numbered item? That's probably not a bullet under five, right?
Well, I was, I mean, I think it was that you were gonna have work sessions on these.
Oh, within, okay, on town plans, okay, that's fine. Yep, yep, I get it. Now, now I see it, all right. Traffic's good, transportation plan, and I know we, we still wanna keep those on our radar, right?
Absolutely.
In the spirit of Mr. Mummarts. I mean, I'm generally okay with continuing the work we've been doing, and is there anything new that anybody's interested in talking about or thinking about, or investigate senior home living? Potential?
I've really enjoyed working on the northwest Superior plan and, and focusing on that area. When, when do you think we're gonna get this wrapped up? Beginning the first half of two thousand nineteen?
You'll hear the presentation from Clarion and company on the fifteenth of January, and then if you guys are comfortable with what they're recommending, then that'll carry on to the board, I think. I wanna say the tenth or the ninth of February is what's scheduled right now. And I think that's a through a work session, so it's the first town board meeting in February. That's a remark for that, and then we'll have direction as to whether or not, you know, there's next steps, you know, I think that, you know, what, there'll be recommendations through this, this process about what to look at for both, you know, original town and for the, the marketplace, and then, you know, I imagine we're not gonna be done in terms of, you know, what that looks like, whether or not we, what, what those next steps are, so. But I think, you know, there'll be recommendations on what changes to make to the town code for original town, and then there'll be a process in order to make those changes, so one example, you know, so.
Anthony, you look like you were about to say something earlier, did you have a?
It, it's not necessarily a, a planning issue, but I, I'd like to find some way, and maybe through either our arts and cultural committee to focus on art in, in additional, in addition to actual cultural issues, so kind of beyond art. I, I think that, and I'm not sure, you know, what the correct form is to do this, but I, I think that we need to look at overall diversity and find a way to have our town become kind of a little more inclusive. And I, it, it might be through the arts and cultural committee, it, it might be through us planning, you know, to have, you know, meetings with our town to expand cultural connection and connectivity. So I'm just not sure how that would go and how that would really work in our plan, but, you know, I'm sitting in this spot, I would like to, you know, find some way to, for us to be able to reach out. And I don't know if it's through this commission or if it's we engage other commissions, so.
Well, I have the ear of the chair of that committee, so I can see what, what she thinks of that, but, and, and whether we can be of any benefit, right, to, to help think from a planning perspective, you know, what, I mean, she always encourages me in every one of these projects to make sure that we bring that up, get them to give us a head nod, and, you know, move that forward, and hopefully, you know, some number, some percentage of that will result in, in, you know, some art. But that's our, you know, that's the art piece, right, so.
And, and I'm fine with you bringing that up, just so that we don't make it a condition, you know, to approve an application, you know?
I'm gonna get it on the checklist before this year's over.
Along that same line, and, and again, I don't know if it's appropriate either, but the diversity side, I also think about, when I think about diversity, is we're putting, all these homes we're talking about, we're putting half a million to three-quarter of a million dollar homes as they're going up that hill. And we never, to mind, I, I don't know what the town is doing about low-income hous, or, or affordable housing, I wanna call it even low-income, right? Because it's not attainable. Attainable, but I do, and, again, so when I think about a planning, in, in thinking about that, is that something that we could, when we finish tackling something like this, could we think about that as how do we? Because we're gonna have, especially in the next nine months, we're gonna have a lot of opportunity, but we're not asking any of them to do anything. And, and again, I could have a very jaded view that I think we should be thinking about that, but, um, and, and I don't know if we're the right, you know, if that's something we can do, because it seems like planning, that does fall under what we should think about.
Yeah, and so I've asked that question of several developers, and the, the answer I get is, um, you know, the cost of the land is cost prohibitive for affordable housing, really of any type. And you're absolutely right, maybe we as a town or as a commission can step in and say, hey, listen, this area needs to be conserved for affordable housing of some type, whether it's housing for the elderly or whether it's eldered for.
Well, there, there are some amazing programs going on. I mean, I, I attended Northwest something or another housing summit that Boulder had put on, and the ideas that are coming out, the, the programs that are out there, I mean, there are people donating their homes into an affordable housing. Right, so, so, you know, in our will, we, rather than the, the house going to our family, it goes into an affordable housing program, right? And then, then it's managed from, from that, right? So again, and it's, and then now all of a sudden you have a home, a nice home in the middle of Superior, that's actually an affordable home, right? And it's, and it's, it's just in a program that's restricted, that has restrictions on it. So there are lots of cool things going on. And I think the northwest area plan gives us an opportunity, right? The other, the other, the idea of, of having accessory dwelling units, right, to provide smaller homes that, that people can rent, or, you know, whether we wanna go be as flexible as allowing lots to be split a little bit differently so that smaller pieces of land can, can be developed, and, and you can have, you know, smaller homes in, in, in that area, right? We have flexibility here. We don't have any flexibility in downtown. We don't have flexibility on private property owner who wants to, you know, make their million or ten million, or whatever it is you need these days, but.
There's hardly any land, I mean, it's very.
Right, but.
It's very little, not developable land left in Superior, there isn't.
But our infill, we have some infill capability. We have, you know, and Anthony continues to try to get senior living in, in different areas, and, and that has to be reasonable, at least attainable, you know, in, in some form or fashion. And we do have some parcels over here that are, could be conducive to that as well, so. I think we should continue to push for that, yeah, so that's great, diverse, diversity in housing, and, you know, and I would say, you know, just paying attention to the affordable housing programs that are going on in, in our county, because they're, they're here.
And how do we become a part? Yeah, how do we participate?
Yeah, right, and, and I mean, I, yeah, like I said, I've gone to a couple, and it's just, it's very cool what's, what's going on. And I can try to attend some more and make those, and have a more formal report, you know, what some of these programs are, but.
I, I'll throw one, one other thing that I just, my wife just read to me tonight in the paper, and I don't know if everyone saw it, but, and it just gets me is, is what's happening in Broome Field over by the mall, and like they just announced a big potential redevelopment over there and where.
Best Buy.
Yeah, Best Buy, yeah, where all of that is, and it just, it, it seems like we as, as we're thinking about planning, how are we? Because they have, no one's brought for that parcel that we own by the, that Superior owns right across from Chick-fil-A. Resolution Trust, Resolution.
Resolution, yeah, that's being, that's.
Half of it's being developed.
Yes.
The Superior shores it, but the other half is still, why is that still vacant, actually?
But how do we align, how do we align what's going on in that part of Broome Field with what we're doing and just staying in touch with it?
Right, yeah.
Because I, I, other than just reading the paper, I don't, you know.
Yeah, so a part of it could be just better, you know, just paying attention to and coordinating.
Actively engaged in regional planning.
Yeah, in the region, yeah, that's great, yeah, I like it, I like it.
Yeah, it'd be interesting. Yeah, it'd be interesting to talk to Broomfield. I think someone talked to the Broomfield Planning Commission when we were talking about signage. I think Ben, I think Commissioner Miller did when, I think he called them up.
Oh, yes, that's right, he did, he did.
And to find, so I thought that was really insightful.
Well, and I always go to Lewisville State, they have, a couple times a year, they do a state of the city address like our mayor does, right? So I always go and sit in those and see what they're doing, just to find out what projects they've got going. I mean, we have Lisa here, she could give us a report on anything that's going on in Lewisville, but...
You guys all have to volunteer for a different municipality.
Yeah, exactly. But, yeah, we have these other, we have Broomfield and Boulder's, I mean, that's hard, maybe South Boulder. But, you know, Boulder's a little, there's a lot going on there.
Well, Boulder and affordable housing are gonna be going around in circles forever, basically.
There are some really good programs that I, I think, like we said, just getting engaged with what's going on and figuring out whether we can participate and, you know, deciding whether we want to bring it forward to the board and try to get some activity on it. Because can you imagine, I mean, I mean, there's got to be people in town that are, you know, no kids and, you know, they're, you know, maybe they want to donate their home. And there's only been six or eight of them that have been donated in, but there are a couple of people have already spoken, they've written in their will, and, you know, and it's, all of a sudden, boom, you got a home somewhere in a nice area that's now part of an affordable, you know, an affordable program, so.
You know, the other thing we talked about this year, and again, we had so many things, but we did have that one development brought, I think, got declined, but on 88th Street. Eventually, what's gonna happen with 88th and being proactive with Lewisville about how that works. Again, we've got a lot of stuff on our plate, but it just seems like that's one that could all of a sudden just blow up in our face, you know? If something happens over with Lewisville, so.
Yeah, and staff's paying attention to a lot of this stuff as they can, too. So he's only one person, but...
I don't really want to go down a rest one moment, but how did that close her up on well, whatever, well, donor is it? How's that working out?
You'd have to ask Alex for a better, but it's, I mean, there's a temporary barrier in right now. And from what I understand, there's budget allocated to improvements on 88th Street that will permanently close it next year, so.
But there's mixed feelings. I mean, I've heard both sides, I've heard both sides. You know, there are people who have to drive, you know, and they know how many minutes more a day they're having to spend going around.
Yeah, I think it's probably more of a split on how people are happy with it, from what we heard from public media.
But is that something we should put, put at least as a, something, because we're gonna discuss this with, or let the town board look at it. Is that something we want to put on and say, is this something you want us to look at?
Well, it's up there on the, if we move up to the traffic, because, I mean, I think that gives us the opportunity to look at any of these things, right?
I missed it.
Because, I mean, when I'm looking at connectivity downtown...
I'm fine, I missed it, I missed it.
Yeah, we should be looking at that stuff real closely, yeah.
I'm good.
I think.
Yep, I'm good, I missed it.
All right. So is this good enough to bring to the next planning commission meeting? And we can maybe tidy it all up then and...
I think so.
Get out of here before 10. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Agreed.
Okay. Any staff announcements?
Not that I didn't announce last time.
All right.
It's the meeting dates that are coming up. So we have the Clarion meeting, I think, on January 15th. I don't have it down in front of me. And then Thrive is coming in on the 22nd. So Bill misspoke. He's hoping for certain, certain review schedules. But we just got the rest of the application for Blocks 26 and 27 from Wilmington. And it's not gonna be on the same track as Thrive, which we've had for several months, so. He would like for it to be, and the context would be great, but it's not gonna align, and we're not gonna delay the Thrive review in order to have it aligned, so. Those will come in later this year, but we, we do have applications that keep coming in the door. And Toll Brothers, as he mentioned tonight, is supposed to be submitted, I think, this week, so.
Are you seeing anything?
And that's about 305 development applications. So just wait till you get down with that stack.
Wow. 305 units?
305 units. It's like the rest of...
Single fam, single family?
Single family. Well, there's townhomes and single, and actual detached, single-family projects.
Are those going south? Is that where those are all going?
Yeah, it'll be south of Village Green Way. Actually, it's south of Central Parkway, but an additional block further south of what...
Is that where Promenade and a connection up to 88th starts to come into play?
That's on the south side of Village Green Park. So where Promenade tees into that park and then splits.
Yeah.
It's on the south side of that. So everything south of that is coming in through one application.
So who's doing Block 15?
From Thrive, it came in for a concept plan for Blocks 14 and 15. So they'll come in separately for that. They want to come in for Block 26 ahead of that. But I think that application for Blocks 14 and 15, based on the concept plan feedback they got, will probably come in by February, I guess, so.
You guys saw the townhomes are being built there and at Fourth and William and original towns. They're vertical, so.
Oh, I didn't, no, I haven't seen it.
Yeah, yeah, they're up, so. No, yeah.
Do you have sort of renderings or something of those, Steve?
I don't know that I do. The one on Fourth and William?
Who?
I've probably seen a paper copy just through the setbacks and whatnot, but I, I don't recall it. I'm sure I saw it. Ernie sends everything to me for a review, but I don't remember.
The building department.
I just wanted to find a picture of it or something, who would I go to?
Go talk to Ernie.
Go talk to Ernie.
Yeah, the building department. Because it's a use-by-right, so it doesn't come through. Yes.